So, welcome everyone to the Carlisle Select Board meeting on December 7. And let me just briefly review the agenda. So we'll begin with community input, then I have a brief LEPC update to offer since Chief Fisher is not able to be with us tonight. And then we'll have a joint Finance Committee Select Board meeting at 7:15 to look at the initial draft of a FY23 budget as well as determine a date for the town meeting next spring. Then following that, we will discuss the funding priorities for the ARPA committee. Following that, we'll have the presentation about the pickleball grant at 8:30. And the item about a new policy regarding the survivors' health insurance will go to our next meeting because we need to prepare the actual language for that. Then we'll, at 9:15, we'll do the 2022 ABCC license renewal for Fern's Country Store. Town administrators report at 9:20, liaison reports at 9:30, and then approval of warrants at 9:40 with an adjournment at 9:45. So I'm going to ask first if there's anyone in person or on the Zoom call who would like to offer any comments during the community input time. And if you're on the Zoom link, you can either indicate by connecting to the chat and raise your hand, or you can simply, I guess the other option, they can raise their hands, right, Tim? And you'll see that.
Yeah.
Is there anybody indicating that they want to offer community input?
Don't see anyone at the moment.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to move on and give you a couple of bits of update from the LEPC meeting which occurred yesterday morning. Carlisle continues to see some new cases, eight new cases in the week leading up to Thanksgiving. They are not severe cases, but we do continue to see new cases every week. The Board of Health is actually considering trying to arrange for a clinic right here in Carlisle to be able to offer booster shots to anyone 18 years or older, and we will learn more about that as they continue the process with the state to see if that can happen. On December 13 is the next clinic in Concord where those that received their, either their booster or children that received their first dose of the vaccine will be able to return and receive the follow-up dose. For the Council on Aging, I'd just quickly report that they are seeing lots and lots of requests for rides, you know, great participation in their, what they're now doing are all kind of drive-through events or Zoom events. The Neighborhood Response Team is trying to provide support to the Afghani family that is living in town now. The Carlisle Public School has had some cases recently, and they continue to do their own contact tracing and continuing to have pool testing and also are continuing to follow the test-and-stay protocol where if someone has been a contact, they can come to school, be tested, and if they're not positive, they can stay in school. And the fire department continues to offer free COVID testing, which is being used regularly. And just one pat on the back to our fire department. When they were in a District 14 meeting, there were a lot of questions about our ability to provide free COVID testing that is free to residents and that are fairly unique and be able to do that. And that, of course, at the moment, it's being covered by FEMA money. And finally, the little bit of fun news coming up, December 11, the fire department is going to do their, well, I don't know if it's annual, but it's been happening in the last couple of years, which is a parade of the fire trucks that will go through town in the middle of the day on Saturday, December 11, this coming Saturday. That concludes the LEPC report. So what time, is it 7:15 yet? It's pretty close. 7:11?
As possible, we won't have a forum, but doesn't mean we can't have a conversation.
Okay. Let's see. So do you want to determine who's on the call? I see James is on the call.
Jim, James is on the call.
James Catatio? Okay. No one else?
We need one more to this.
Yeah.
Victor is coming in just now.
Oh, good. All right.
We can make it official.
Good. Well, welcome, welcome to the members of the Finance Committee. Because this is a joint meeting, I'm going to let Jim, yeah, you want to come up to the microphone? That'd be great. Then people can hear you. And Scott, if you want to move up and sit up at one of the mics, that'd be fine. Then you can be heard by those that are on screen.
Well, then, since we have a quorum, I'd like to have us officially enroll the meeting. And if we could start, James?
Yep. Catatio here.
Adar here.
Leong here.
Triola here. And I believe that's it. So we have a quorum, and we can, if need be, we could actually make a decision as a committee. Well, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk again, the second time in this budget cycle. I'd just like to start on behalf of our committee, offering our condolences to Tim and his family for his recent loss. And we, most of us have experienced something like this, and we do, we do understand what it is like. So we wish you well. Let me start by going over what our process is and where we are in the process. We began really in September with a letter to all the departments outlining what we thought made sense for an approach for fiscal '23. Late October, we met with all the departments and commissions and heard their budget presentations. There were one or two that weren't able to make it, and we followed up with them in November. We've had some back and forth since then. This last night, the goal was to then kind of gather the information, see where we were overall, maybe begin to make some decisions. We really didn't do that. There's still a fair amount that's in flux, but I think we are nevertheless on the schedule we sketched before with you, which is to send another letter out to all departments before the end of this month that would have a preliminary budget for fiscal '23, a budget that we hope will hold by and large. Leave January available for follow-up meetings if there's new information from a department or if something else happens, particularly regarding warrant articles that might be out there. And then by February to come back here with what we hope would be the final budget to present to a town meeting. So there's a little bit more in flux at the moment than perhaps we would have liked, but nevertheless, I think we can stay within that schedule. You know, as always, there are things that happen that you plan for and ones that happen that you don't plan for. I think, you know, we're often asked about long-term planning, and, you know, ideally we would have long-term planning in more than we do, but there are some things, and Scott in particular has helped to draw out the implications of this. I think our greatest concern, even less about fiscal '23 than the following fiscal years, are the way the school budgets may well distort the whole town's budget. And, you know, we know, I mean, you all know that there's a negotiation underway with the Carlisle Teachers Association, and there's also, there's a footnote of negotiation starting with the Carlisle Police. The high school or the town of Concord schools just completed a negotiation with their teachers. Those contracts currently and in the future, you know, drive substantial increases in our costs over time. The last two years, we benefited because the enrollment share of Carlisle at the high school went down, and that gave us about $800,000 of relief over those two years. Now we're going into a period where it's going to be quite the opposite. If you look at the projections on enrollment, it'll be sort of, the split will be kind of flat for '23, but then it shifts and there's a 7% increase for us in '24, another big increase in '26 and '27. Scott has kind of worked out the numbers based on what the high school has given us. Those changes alone could cost the town $2 million. So we think that as we think about fiscal '23, we can't ignore the reality of these contracts and the way, and the way they, you know, create a kind of momentum for higher costs well beyond what I think is sustainable for the town. And that's very much in our minds as we look at some of the things that are in play right at the moment for fiscal '23. Now, if you looked at the draft budget, or it's really not a draft budget, it's a budget worksheet that we have shared with you. I would like to stress that it is, you know, a work in progress. This is not something final. The notes may not make much sense because they're really, you know, internal to the committee. But we have, as a committee, talked about pretty much everything on here. We hope by next Monday night, we will move to, on our part, make some decisions about that. Monday, we will have the high school come in to present their budget. They are actually doing it more officially tonight to the high school, school committee, probably right about now as we talk, they're presenting that budget. But we will have the high school next week. That's the biggest missing piece overall. So however, if you look, if you were to jump down to that line in our budget for CCRSD, it says 3.2%. You know, the indications that we've had and looking at the modeling they gave us in October, that's probably not too far off what we're going to hear from them next Monday. So overall, if we look at what's been presented to us, what has been asked of the town for '23, it looks like a 3.2% increase. We don't think we can accept that. We believe that that needs to be closer to a number like 2.5. And, you know, we have discussed various ways to get there. We think that it's very possible to do with, you know, either in consultation with some departments like the school or just, you know, in terms of what we would support from, of what's been asked. But for tonight, you know, we, we're happy to talk about any of these items in terms of where we are, but I think it's that bottom line that we would hope the Select Board would see as reasonable and concur that that's a target we should try to get to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not get that draft budget.
Well, there's a-- Can you make a copy? You want a copy?
Do you have a second copy?
No. I can make a copy.
Were you, Kate, were you sent a link to--
Google Docs.
You know what? I realized that, I was looking at it, it only went to me and Nathan and David. I don't know why you weren't on, or you and Luke weren't on the list.
Actually, yeah.
I did, but--
Victor, who's on the call--
And I didn't get that other--
Jan, is there a copy?
If Victor's on the call, he could also send it right now, I'm sure.
Yeah, I can send, I can send it to you. I'm not quite sure what happened. Actually, everybody on the Select Board was included, but apparently it didn't get through, maybe through the spam filters and all. But I'll resend it right now.
Well, because I always check all my spam.
But while you're waiting for that, let's talk about, we don't need the budget to talk about the school plan that you--
Right.
So, you know, this is an age-old problem. First of all, I want to ask you clarifications, Jim. You said you hoped that we would support, and the bottom line was like 3.2% globally, right?
Right.
And the school budget's three and a half. Are you, so you managed to tuck it in somehow. Are you saying though that you can't really tuck it in? I'm not clear on what the ask is from your--
Well, no, I'm just, I think we're talking probably informally now, but the, our school, the Carlisle School, they're both our schools, is asking for 4.1 increase. And we're going to go back and have further conversation with them. In fact, Scott's going to do that tomorrow. But all we're saying is that right now, the total bottom line we see with what we know is a 3.2% increase. We're going to make recommendations and ultimately send a letter out that gets closer to two and a half. We hope that's something--
Globally.
Yes, globally.
Yeah.
And that that's something that makes sense to you. We're not asking you to vote on it even, but just--
Okay. So let's go back to the school conundrum, which is that, you know, and timing is unfortunate in that inflation is more of an issue right now than it was when the region was there thing, right? So I fully expect that's going to be a hot topic. But as you point out, three-quarters at least of the strength, maybe closer to 85%, is just salaries that are contained in that, plus the bargaining agreement. So if one takes whatever that quota ends up being, and on top of it, those who qualify for steps and lanes, I just never see that quota unless, unless we go to larger, we offer fewer specialty, larger class sizes, fewer pairs. I mean, those, the decisions to really bend that curve are difficult decisions.
Yes.
And we had a conversation a few months ago, and I guess, I really feel like the town is kind of at an inflection point where we have to decide if we're, if we're going to do, if we're going to do schools above everything, then we have to start doing no class decisions and other trades on the non-school stuff because we just, and if we say, no, that's not really right, then I think we have to look hard at whether we really should have an independent. I never really got there in my mind in all my years of school committee. I love the Carlisle School, but boy, we're really paying a lot for that.
Well, and we know, you know, the Arcatah 8 teachers are the highest paid in the state out of well over 350 communities. The high school teachers are the highest paid in the state. You know, it feels like you could have a really good school system and not be the very highest, you know?
But you're not going to, I don't think, I guess, from a practical standpoint, my opinion, that you're not going to change the outlook of whatever school we have that wants to be as excellent as it can be and the pressure from those state unions and stuff to push us to the other top. Maybe not the tippy-top, but right up there. So that would be a much, much harder sell is to be, you know, tone it down. I think it's got to be a more building block thing, which is, you know, and I don't say this in a negative way, but the fact is, we have a superintendent, two principals, business managers, facilities, you know, we've got a lot of infrastructure around this little independence that, quite honestly, are not necessary in a public world. We're not talking LA Unified, right? We're talking about five, five schools might go to six. I mean, those are hard, hard falls for this town, but--
But the one tool, I think, David, that the, that we have and the board has, the only one, is in terms of the total budget that we would support. And the school can figure out how to make that work, whether it's changing class sizes, whether it's not having the number of administrators--
You certainly start there.
You know, yeah, I mean, we don't have a lot of tools.
But, you know, again, it's not the school's call. This is the issue, okay? The school's job and the, really, the school committee's job--
School committee.
To make the most excellent school they can, and yeah, they have to, they're budget, they're budget conscious, they are budget conscious. But, you know, we had a dialogue when I was on SINGPOM and not on School Board about a superintendent's union, and that sort of flamed out, but that's a light version of merging. And that's not something the school committee can do, David. That's got to come from us guys to the town of Concord. I really don't think the school and the school committee, they play a role, but I don't see them driving that kind of path. And I don't see, by the way, even if we say, okay, I'm sorry, you only have 2% figured out. They have to do it, but every year it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a, that's a, in my mind, that's almost a more corrosive, long-term thing, to kind of crank it down, you know, each year, whereas maybe we really have to start thinking broadly about the next, you know, 50, 100 years.
But even that kind of union with another district that you're referring to, which I certainly think our committee would be supportive of, still, you know, gives you a kind of a one-time benefit, but the majority of your expenses are still going to come from the drivers that we're aware of today.
Yeah, no, that's a true, that's a fair point. But that, isn't that systemic? I mean, what are, every peer town must be going through that, right?
In varying degrees, but you know, one of the interesting things that's come up, you know, I know very recently is that if you look at our, and you know it better than almost any of us, but in terms of steps and lanes, if you look at the lanes, and the lanes, for those who don't know, are the categories based on the level of education that teachers have, so bachelors, masters, masters plus 30, et cetera. In all of those lanes, we start $5,000 higher than any district we could identify in the general area. So, you know, there's, then when you do that, then you're, you know, you're already on a escalator that moves faster than anybody else. You know, there might be some tweaks that could, around that, for example, that over time, not in '23 or '24, but over time, but help to mitigate some of this.
And, you know, I, David, commenting on your note about your, that the school board, their job is really to provide the, you know, most excellent school they can. That doesn't, though, mean that they don't have responsibility for managing their budget, particularly since we don't have control of that budget. We can--
And I said, they're, I believe they're quite budget conscious. And I believe they make those trades, not just the board, but these initiatives, makes those trades every day. And, you know, again, if, if they are forced into a number, they will comply with it.
Yeah, and I, and I think in the short run, the, you know, the ideas you're raising are good ones to raise. They will take a lot of discussion.
Which is why--
Yeah, and, but, but I, but I think we, we also need to address the immediate. And I think another part of the conversation is understanding what are the needs that are not school-related, that have been, have not received the funding that they should have, right? And to understand that, you know, I'm a big number-one fan of the, our school, and but when it comes, when we have, when we don't have endless resources, I think we want the school committee and the school administration and the teachers to understand the trade-offs that we've been making and that we need to, we need to shift that, you know, as we've identified some priorities that have really suffered over the last period of time. Yeah.
Can I just chime in, though? There's, there's not enough in the rest of the budget. I mean, when you really look at, and I, I just did a very simple exercise and sent it to Jim, where I looked at what is forecast by the high school, which we have less control over as a town.
No control, really.
And if you just take those as, you know, let's assume that those hold true, and we look at 6% to 8% increases in three of the next five years, if you say, well, what's a level service budget increase for K through 8, just to maintain existing staff and program? You know, I think in, when I, when we're looking at the FY23 request, it's about a 4% increase. And, you know, and if, if you factor in most of that staff, if you factor in--
For the Carlisle School or for the--
Like, we, you know, and again, we're in a contract negotiation, so there's assumptions being made, but you could, you could essentially be on a path where even if we say level service, you're locking in a 3% or more percent greater increase. You combine that with the high school, and you keep everything else at, say, 1%, where everything else in town at a 1% increase, you're looking at 3%, 4%, 5% increases overall in the tax rate. There's just not enough in the rest, in the other 30% of the budget to make up the potential increases. And that's what we need to figure out is, in my mind, how do we create a, a budget at K through 8 where a level increase, a level service, is not a 3% or 4% increase, but it's a sustainable 2% to 2.5% increase? And that's, we have to have that conversation now as we're, as we're looking at contract negotiations with the teacher.
One of you guys is on that team, right?
Jim is. And, but it's, and it's also, you know, transportation, all these other things. Because if we get locked into a five-year, it's going to be 3% to 3.5% just to maintain level service, that's just not sustainable. And we have to, we have to figure that out now. And the, the problem is compounded by the high school. If, if those forecasts hold and we do see an allocation increase and, you know, there's nowhere to find the money, there's nowhere else to take it from. The bottom-line number to the taxpayers has to go up more than what we would, would like to see and more than what we were looking at this year.
And we also, though, you know, intend to convey this message to the high school next week, that sure, there's a '23 discussion to have, which is maybe not that difficult, but we, we need them to work on this issue too.
You can say that, but I'm telling you, we're going to say yes, of course.
I know, but--
Because they lived the hard part, okay? We had these arguments of, the model you have is the model I had, I predicted it 10 years ago. You just have to look at the enrollment for kindergarten. It doesn't change that much after John Valentine. You can predict it from the kindergarten demographics what's going to happen in 10 years, maybe, so, eight years. So we saw it, and Concord went as far, some people in Concord went as far, to try to change the formula about three, four years ago because they knew it'd after, and we felt, no, 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 don't mess with the formula. So we're reaping the other side, and we know we're gonna, and they have no incentive. I mean, sure, they're gonna, they are cross-conscious as well. I don't want to cast aspersions on their budget, but they're going to reap the windfall, and they're not going to feel the same pain. And we have no control in that. So you could take that number and you can do like the old, you know, when Larry Barton was doing this job, he put in first the things he knew he couldn't move. That'll be one of those things, right? And then, you know, we're down to the discussion. But, so I just feel like we're maybe at a window, I don't know when the window is, but to Barney's point, these long, hard conversations about really, really are we going to keep? Because, you know, if we, if we, if you, if you were to just take a simple, a simple equation and say, I'm going to go for bigger class sizes. I'm just going to go for big, all the data suggests smaller sizes make a much better product. I'm going to go for bigger class sizes, or I'm going to say, you know what, really, it's time for me to think about merging my schools. And where does that go? I mean, that's an exercise that we could do. We could start thinking about that. Because at the end of the day, everything, steps, lanes, it all boils down to how many teachers serving the kids. And if we, if we take, and there's debate about this, but if we take, as a starting point, that the population of the case rate, the pre-case rate is relatively stable at 600, 610, 620, you know, but not 800 anymore, if we take that assumption for a while, it's all about how many teachers. It's not what they're paid. You're not going to be able to go back in time on it. It's how many teachers.
And I think, yeah, I think one of the problems is, I believe, and it's partly based on my experience years ago in education, that you could raise the class sizes without diminishing the quality of education. I don't mean to go from 17 to 40, but you know, you could, however, we're so small that, you know, you don't get any scale, you know, benefits from trying to inch your way up. You go to 20, you still have the same problem you have today, or 22, you know?
No, if you chop, and Barney knows this probably better than anybody, if you chop up four-section third grade to three sections, do that math, that's six more kids, right? You can't go baby steps.
Right.
Which also, it drives a few other issues in town that are less consequential but not trivial, you know, because of our scale. There are things that, you know, if, if, for example, we say, we, just for argument's sake, we need three police officers on daytime shifts, well, whether we have 2,000 people living here or 15,000, it's going to cost the same, you know? And you, you go in groups of one, you go to two, or you, it's not like you can go to two and a half, you know?
Right, because people come and hold numbers. But then, and then the police is, is another example of where a small, if you have to have a 24/7 coverage and a minimum of two, I think, is Dracula and for very good safety reasons, sick, vacation, blah-bitty-blah, they have to have more. And when we were looking at the police, joining the police forces, we looked at the Concord model, and they, for them to add shifts to a state, they would keep them in the station house here. It would not be 10 minutes or 15 minutes call time. There'd be people here, but their staffing gets so much easier because they've got 50 people to drop them. Goes out sick, John's going to show up, you know? And that dramatically drops that. It dramatically does. And that's another, in my mind, difficult, a very consequential thing, and I don't think the quality of service would suffer. It's just, but we're not, we're not approaching those yet right now. I don't mean we do, but--
Yeah, no, I think, I think those issues like-- Yeah, no, I think, I think those issues like, you know, with the police, with dispatchers, even with fire, you could imagine alliances of some sort that would really help us over time while we try to wrestle with the schools.
But the biggest that is the schools.
By far, yes.
Two, thirteen, well, sixteen, over sixty percent of the budget. And then the other big thing that we have over the next couple of years is the capital projects, which, you know, you can triage, but you can't ignore.
Which have been starved of oxygen because of the schools over the last, how many ever years?
Well, that also brings up a topic that I hope we talk about a bit tonight. You know, this, what you're looking at assumes another facilities warrant of about five hundred thousand dollars. We know that, we believe, I shouldn't say we know, we think the high school is going to look for a warrant article that relates to the repaving of the road, a project we've heard about in the past, but was sort of shelved during COVID. And that is approximately a million and a half, of which our share is the twenty-three point six eight percent or whatever we are. But, you know, what else is out there? The school has an accumulation of needs around HVAC, and they have said they would really like to do the Wilkins Building in twenty-three at least. That's probably at least a half a million, and that's based on an estimate they got in the spring of two thousand nineteen. They'll possibly hire today.
Yeah, possibly.
You know, so that, that's out there. And then one of the questions that we were hoping we could hear from you is whether there are other significant warrant articles that you know of that haven't been brought to our attention yet as we're looking at all this.
Well, there, in terms of money warrant articles, I was just trying to think about this earlier today, and Tim, I don't know if you have, already have some thoughts about what those might be from, from what you've heard from folks, but I don't see very, I see some warrant articles, I'm not sure how many of them actually have a dollar cost. You know, the master plan, they, there are going to be some short-term warrant article recommendations. It's up to the planning board, you know, to decide whether they want to move ahead with any of those and, you know, like one of the proposals, one of the recommendations is to allocate staff time. Now, does that mean hiring a new person or adding it to an existing position, but to, you know, kind of an energy sustainability person that could, that could do more around both residential and municipal savings in terms of alternative forms of energy and, you know, grant writing for that purpose, et cetera. The transfer station task force, it's fairly small, but they do, the proposal that they're going to bring to the select board early January is likely to include some funding requests, depending on how much can come out of the existing sticker fund and, and what might need to be new funding. I don't know, Kate, if the Affordable Housing Trust has anything on the horizon.
Not for one, they would go to CPA.
Yeah, okay.
They're going to do the whole.
Yeah.
Have the, so like, has the select board set a deadline for warrant articles?
End of January is what we've, is what our public.
Once the date for the meeting is, has been set, we'll send a note out to departments, please. Send your, our, our, or, or send by the end of January, even if it's just the notion of what they're looking for, they don't need the final warrant language at that point, but we need to know.
They have plans.
Well, or you're in a red box.
Yeah.
And in our questionnaire, we asked them, you know, that question about warrant articles, and the only other one beyond the facilities was the, the high school. And they are in the process right now of trying to refresh that estimate for the Wilkins Building.
And do we know if they're gonna, if they're, have they set their town meeting for next spring and whether it'll come before, for Concord?
It's May first.
Okay.
After.
So it's likely to be after ours, yeah.
Well, it starts May first, I don't know, goes till June, July, something like that, you know?
If I just, if I just, I'm sorry I was late, but how do we get to the bottom of the answer of what, what we were talking about when I first came in here, you know, as far as the school increase in that percentage? And, I mean, if, if, if we all get together in January and that, that the town budget increase is four percent, I mean, that's kind of a non-starter, right? So how do we, how do we get to the answer as to like how, how big an increase can any one department have? And are we capping it and saying live within that or?
Well, we're hoping, Nathan, that we can put the overall bottom line increase at no more than two and a half percent. And that in getting there.
Townwide.
Townwide, not department by department, because in, in some, for example, there's no COLA in, in that for departments, but doesn't leave COLA out, it just doesn't look at that for a department. But at the same time, you know, we're, we're starting a discussion, and Scott's starting it tomorrow with the school. We do want to talk to them about reducing their requested increase for next year. We think they will be fairly responsive within, you know, the constraints we were talking about earlier, and that we can gain some, some room from that, and look across the board at the extras, you know, additional staff that have been asked for. So not things that, you know, we're currently doing that require increases all by themselves. There's still equipment, capital equipment that needs to be purchased, and, you know, we think that for next year, the number probably will be a little lower than it was for this year, but we'll still be able to meet the critical needs that people have. So it's still a little of this, little of that, but we think we can get it down to that number. The longer term is the real concern.
Right, remember, because, yeah, exactly, it's, it's the longer term. As we're saying, there's only so much the other budgets have, and if you're not including COLA in any of the departments, then it's not really looking at what the overall.
Well, the COLA's in the bottom line.
It's in the bottom line of the town, but not for the department. So if you're looking at school or the police department.
The school includes the COLA.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, their own COLA, yeah.
Okay.
And the police is up for negotiation right now, so that's a separate.
Right. I just worry that we're going to get, you know, we're going to, we're going to see a budget that's just kind of a non-starter and then we can only offset it by free cash so often.
I think what Jim is saying is our guideline will be about a two and a half percent, our goal, if we get to two and a half percent to the town.
Uh huh.
And then we'll have discussions on that, but that's where we want to be.
I think that's a good guideline.
And many departments will be flat, other than the eventual COLA, another question to ask you, you folks, but many departments will be flat, and others that won't be are really driven by contractual agreements rather than by, you know, hey.
It's two and a half percent without COLA.
With COLA.
With COLA.
With COLA, yeah. And, and so that is something I think.
We made a provision that we hope would be adequate.
The COLA's on top of your two now.
No.
No.
We hope, David.
How do you, what does this number have to be accommodated? So there's two point three or something?
No.
There's a COLA assumption in there, correct?
There's a COLA assumption.
Yeah.
But when you say like a zero and.
No, it's not, it's not reflected in the department.
No department, yeah, it's a separate, something else we have buried in the budget and that we'd prefer not to state.
But, but is it the bottom line in this one at least thirty-three, four, or is it some other number?
I mean, the, yes, it's in there.
All expenditure includes the twenty, the COLA.
An estimate we made that could be wrong about what the COLA might be.
I don't mean for schools.
Right?
I mean for the other.
Everybody else.
So in the, in the line item for the department, that number will not include COLA.
Right.
There's a COLA assumption of, of one COLA number that covers all departments that is in the budget in a separate line item that factors it into the bottom line, but it's not broken out by department yet. When we know the COLA, then it will be applied to the departments, which takes some.
But it's in somewhere, it's.
It's in the, yeah, yes, it is.
It's in the money here.
Yeah, down at the bottom.
I mean, it's, it's a little bit of a game, but, you know.
Yeah.
And typically, I mean, like, most years what happens is we don't get that in time to distribute it to all the budgets until, before town meeting, so sometimes it has to be figured in later on, but, but it's in, it's in there. We would definitely plan to accommodate that in whatever is presented.
Sorry to derail it and sorry for being late. I, I like the two and a half number.
No, you actually, no, this is, this is, this is good, Nathan, no problem.
Yeah, and I, I wanted us as a select board to each, if we're in agreement as a group that we would support that guidance letter percentage.
Certainly no higher.
Yeah, yeah. That's sort of, that's the ceiling, yeah, yeah, okay.
So then the question is, what, how do you anticipate your process for talking about a COLA?
Yeah. We haven't, how have we done that in the past, Tim?
In the past, you've, you've asked the personnel board when they, when they meet to consider a COLA for the coming fiscal year. Last year, the board discussed getting away from a COLA as a percentage and, and moving to a more of a merit-based compensation system. I don't think we've done very much work on that, so if, if we're going to ask for a COLA recommendation, we, again, ask personnel to make that recommendation to, well, think on, and, and the select board usually, at a coordination meeting, sort of sell that out. Meanwhile, personnel committee's doing their work, are they, you know, I think?
They haven't not begun.
No, they haven't, they haven't met, you know, two months.
You think we could do that by the end of December?
Sure, sure.
I don't need to, I mean, Barney, you're the.
I do most of the floor, but yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say.
They need the numbers.
Yeah, and I think, right, we, so.
Typically that happens, you usually get that final number in January, February.
Usually January.
Well, let's see if we can, if we can get something by the end of December at least, maybe to talk about it at our first January meeting, Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we could see, we could discuss it as a select board and then have a joint conversation in January.
Unless you're going far afield in one direction or the other, any, any variance from probably what the estimate is in terms of the overall budget is not going to, it's not going to move the needle dramatically.
Well, we hope. I mean, everybody's hearing about inflation, of course, and we know the last six months has been well higher than it's been for the last ten or more years. The, the one thing that I, I would like to note on that is that, I think for many of us too, inflation always hurts the most for people on fixed incomes.
Yeah.
Right? And I'd just like to note that I think we should think of our town as being on a fixed income, you know? And so, you know, since we're on both sides of that concern, we have very little ability to really raise our revenue. It's all property tax based, it's two and a half capped, very little growth. So, you know, when, as the people are saying, well, it's got to be five or six percent, you know, yeah, I mean, that's, it's hard if you're on a fixed income and it's hard if your, your source of revenue is fixed. So that's more than editorial comment, yeah.
Well, you know, I don't, I don't think Wayne is going to make it tonight to, it doesn't appear to discuss the town meeting date, but should we go ahead and do that just while we have the finance committee here at least come up with a proposed date that we can run by?
He generally clears his schedule in April. And it, it has been the week after the April vacation in the past on a, many times, it's that week following, really this year too.
Yeah, so if we, April, so April eighteenth is the school vacation week.
Right.
Right? And so it would be the, and are we thinking it would be on a weeknight again indoors?
I think the plan is to go for an indoor meeting.
Yeah, especially in April, we wouldn't make any sense, yeah. Right after Easter.
And, and when is Concord is May second and twenty-first?
The first, which is the following Sunday, yeah.
So you, you don't like, because we've gone to sort of weekend town meetings.
Well, that was when we were also doing them outdoors, and we're not going to do it as an outdoor meeting in April.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, but I guess, one reason I thought was more participation. It's hard for.
Oh, to do a weekend indoor meeting.
It could be indoor. I don't think indoor and, and day of week are, don't, are not co-related, I just think.
No, right, right, but just go indoors, but on a weekend.
Yeah, I mean, that's a question, I guess, maybe, I don't know if governance task forces, getting into that stuff, but you're trying to get more participation from, I mean, to be fair, and let's think to the brother. If we're going to, if we're going to be hard on the schools, we should not also make it hard for the school customers to make the meeting. The group, the group that makes the meeting no matter what is the group that you're talking about on fixed income. And they have, I don't want to say they have an agenda because everybody's going to, they come from one perspective. The group that's most harmed by not being really easily able to participate is the group of children in the school who, seven to ten, it's just not a, a non-starter for those people. So I think we should consider, you know, a weekend afternoon, Monday.
We'll say the weekends, as a, as a parent with kids in sports, weekends are really tough too.
But then you make a choice, then you make a choice. If, if I say to you, you know, you don't care enough about the issue you know is going to be debated.
Well, you have a choice from seven to ten at night as well.
You kind of don't, right? I mean, that's.
They offer, they offer, you know, babysitters and everything in the school.
It's April, there's still a lot of people going away for the weekend skiing and.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, there's, I don't think there's a perfect time.
Yeah.
There's still perfect, everything's.
I mean, the only thing.
What are we, are we looking at?
Well, the dates could either be, the last Monday in April is April twenty-fifth. The Concord Town Meeting is the following Sunday, starts the following Sunday. Is there any advantage to us having our town meeting after the Concord Town Meeting?
There is.
So have it either, have it, if we have it Monday the second, depending on how many days, that's what I was going to say, you don't know whether.
They don't believe the ninth, I don't think they.
To go to the ninth?
Well, all I'm saying is if they debate as last time they did, the parking lot thing or whatever.
Yeah.
If they reject it, then we don't have to take it up. If they accept it, we know that.
No, I know, that's why I was.
It's an important, sometimes it's important.
Well, one year went the other way.
Was that?
Right.
One year went the other way, we voted something down.
Right, and so they didn't, yeah.
Right, but normally, we're setting ourselves up for a problem that we voted something down.
The only thing, the parking lot?
It's actually not the parking lot.
I mean, the, the driveway.
Anything of the road, yeah, and the sidewalk.
And it may not be, you know, it was pretty controversial when I was on, trying to build a middle school.
Yeah, right, right.
I've been inclined to do it on the twenty-fifth and not overthink it.
Uh huh, just go with the last Monday of, of April.
And actually, I should note, last night, they were going in front of the select board in Concord regarding their warrant article. I don't know how that came out.
Yeah.
I mean, the other thing, I'm just throwing things against the wall here, but you could, you know, given more people are working from home, you know, an earlier start time might be something to think about. If you did a six o'clock start time and you wanted to front load, we always do the budget upfront.
Yeah, that's not bad.
You'd be hitting that by like.
Where are we with the rules of Zoom participation at town meetings?
Only, only for representative town meeting currently.
Okay, so the people can attend but not vote, I mean, they can listen to the admission meeting.
Right, right.
It's not ideal, but.
You know, an earlier start time.
I'm okay with earlier start times, yeah.
Might be, I don't know why you.
The good thing about earlier start times is if you get to the end and you kind of have this bucket of issues and it's like nine-thirty, you tend to roll, right? But if we started at six, maybe we could, it'd be nice to get back to one night time.
But you're saying for parents, six o'clock might be easier?
Well, if the, if the concern is you have little ones and they, you know, they can't be up at eight-thirty at night.
Or they need to be put to bed.
You know, I don't know if the, typically the seven was to allow people to commute back and get to the.
Gotcha.
I think that's right.
I don't know, I'm, I guess, I'm throwing things against the law, I don't know.
I think you're just a very good point, that fewer people commuting, you know, in the public sector.
I think it might be a little, I mean, I'm just guessing, but it may be a little less disruptive to say, well, we're going to do it at six, then we're going to move it to a Saturday.
I don't know, this is all just.
Well, let's, well, tentatively, you know, I mean, the timing, the time, the start time could change, but what if we tended, yeah, what if we say it's Monday the twenty-fifth, that's our proposed date, and we're considering a six o'clock start?
Are there any benchmarks? I mean, I don't know who, Wayne or somebody could just look at what other towns are doing, if they've had success.
Right, given the changes in, in.
It's in the Board's purview, the, the date, the time, all of it, but obviously you need to coordinate with the moderator.
Right. Well, will you do that, Tim, and just check in with Wayne about that date and the timing? And, and see if he has any advice? But let's tentatively go with that on the 25th of April. And that will also allow Peggy Wang, you know, Town Clerk, to figure out where, when she's gonna have the town elections, when the caucuses need to happen. You know, it's helpful for her to have that date too. Okay.
Well, I think that, I want to thank you for your time this evening. I think we need to adjourn our meeting since we did formally open it. And we have still Victor and James on there.
One quick thing, Jim, I don't, I don't know if you wanna cover this briefly or not, but do you want to identify the places in the budget where there were requests for additional positions or additional hours? And where the FinCom is leaning right now, or do you wanna wait and have that at a future conversation?
I think all the places where there's requests come in are identified on the notes here. I think as a committee, we would prefer not to indicate where we lean. I think next Monday night, we'll, we'll lean all the way, but.
Okay, okay.
Are you leaning, I mean, are there specific positions that you have?
We haven't seen the numbers. All we've done is talked to it and said, okay, is it worth going through the process? We have not voted at all on the numbers.
And there are some issues, you know, obviously need to be discussed related to couple of departments that.
Right.
But I think those, those are underway, those discussions are underway.
Yeah.
Again, this is a guideline, so there may be, if there's an open question, you know, maybe we don't put it in the guideline, but it's, we always flag, there's always a handful of items that we flag to be resolved.
And just so you guys aren't the bad guys, just make sure you're saying, it's Board Selectment, you know.
We, we don't mind being the bad guy.
We kinda like you to be the bad guys too, actually.
Ultimately, we have to be the bad guys.
You are, yes. We're, we're just a front for you.
Yeah, okay.
Ultimately, us.
You've got, in the CPS number, you said Edco, question mark. Oh, does the Edco settlement have to be paid on the operating side? No, right?
Well, it has to be paid from the town, you know, and.
It's not in this, I mean.
No.
It's something, it has to be voted.
It's, it's probably, David, I, I was able to go to a executive session of the School Committee not long ago where they talked about Edco. It's likely to be a fiscal '22 issue. This year issue. That's what they're aiming for.
You would pay, you would, you would pay for that out of reserve money or?
That's what we have to, maybe, that's what we have to figure out.
Any preliminary idea of how many, how many years before the death will fall?
I, I think because it was in the executive session, I really shouldn't comment, but, you know, it's, it's gonna be a real number, you know? It's not gonna be, uh, de minimis.
Yes, all right. Well, thank you. And I know you need to formally close your meeting.
I heard we're gonna have a 0% budget increase.
So can we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Second, James.
Okay, roll, James.
Catatio I.
Dar I.
Yang I.
Stril I. Great, thanks, everybody. I would actually like to stay for the.
Yes, please, please do. Good. Oh.
That is a much higher obligation.
Yes, yes. All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for all of your work. I have a much better understanding of it after the last six months of trying to be at your meetings, yeah.
Makes one of us then.
No, it's the understanding of the work you put in, not necessarily of the.
Once again, we are so lucky to have all of you on that FinCom.
Thank you, Jim. Good night.
As we, yeah, as we are of you.
No, we're, we're much far less.
I was at the, I was at the Pats game last night in Buffalo, so my, my mind isn't quite as sharp.
I thought of you, actually, looking at the wind. Was it amazing? The wind?
I was, I was bundled up, just, so I did, we were ready for it, but it was, it was, it was fun watching the, sorry for any Bills fans that may be listening, but it was fun watching all those hearts break. Over the course of the game. They could just see the hope draining out of them.
Yeah, yeah.
They were, yeah, it was, it was interesting.
Yeah. All right, well, on to, um, the, yeah, funding priorities in the ARPA Committee and so Kate and Scott, thank you for your.
And let me say at the outset, I did not post a meeting for this, so we have Kate, myself, and I think, um, John is, is, uh, he'll be joining. Um, this is not a posted meeting, so we will not deliberate. And really, the point of this was to get, um, bring you up to speed and, and get any initial thought, or at least set the stage to get input from the Select Board about, uh, the America, American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um, and let me just, just do a quick kind of orientation here. So, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act was, was signed and, you know, it, it provides funds to towns and cities to mitigate the impact of COVID. And, um, through this act, we were, Carlisle was awarded approximately $1.5 million, of which we, correct me if I go astray here, Tim, we received half of that already, so we received approximately $750,000. And the expectation is we would receive the balance of the funds, um, approximately 12 months from the original receipt of funds. So sometime around September of next year, we would get the balance. There had been some discussion about what the total would be and how they would use some of the, the county allocated funds, but it seems like, at least in the first, first deposit, we got what we were expecting, which is a good thing. Um, so we have a million and a half dollars, um, in American Rescue Plan Act funds, and I'll talk a little bit about in a second, but we have the ARPA Committee, um, and we were appointed to recommend the ARPA use of funds to the Select Board. And what's key here is the use of funds does not require approval at town meetings. So, um, you know, in, in, in talking with Kate and amongst ourselves, I mean, our view is that we will do the due diligence, we will do the, you know, our attempt at prioritization and recommendation, kinda like FinCom does for the budget, but ultimately, the approval of the funds and how they're ultimately awarded would be the purview of the Select Board. Unless, and again, this is where it gets murky, unless we wanted to, uh, you know, do it another way, but our role is to, to make recommendations. So we've been meeting, um, through the, through the fall, we've had five meetings. Most recently, we sent out the process letter, which I know you received a copy of, and we defined an initial process just to get the ball rolling. One of the things that's important here is that, um, while we can go through the budget requests and identify projects that we're prioritizing as a town, that, that may be eligible for ARPA funding, we also wanted to solicit potential projects from the town, from the community, from stakeholders who aren't part of the budget process but might be eligible for funds. So, we sent out that letter, um, I sent it to the people who had contacted me, I sent it to the mosquito. Um, like to see if we can get it on the website in some form or function. Churches, and I know we've had conversations with the, yeah, but we wanna cast a wide net to just understand what, where and what the needs might be. Um, but we did put a deadline of first submissions for January 7th, and the reason, in particular, I feel strongly about that date, is we wanna get a good inventory of projects to evaluate as we move through the budget process. So it's important to know, um, if we're looking at, say, an infrastructure project like HVAC that might be part of a facilities recommendation in a warrant, we wanna know that if this is eligible for ARPA, is this a project we would wanna do? So we're not going out raising money from the taxpayer only later to figure out, maybe we should have funded that through ARPA. So it's important that we can move this along in, in parallel. We expect to have other submission deadlines as we, as we roll along, but we wanted to at least, uh, you know, put that initial deadline to, to generate some, some conversation in projects. And so, right now, we sent the letter out and we're waiting, um, essentially, and to, to receive, uh, requests. And I'd gone through the, the capital budget and all, you know, and, and made a list of potential projects that might be eligible for ARPA that are part of, uh, like the five-year capital plan of Carlisle. And, you know, I have a list, I won't share it because it's very tentative and it's, it's not even been vetted, but, you know, we have a lot of infrastructure projects, in particular in this town, around HVAC, around water treatment, that would be eligible for ARPA uses. And so part of, you know, what we'll wanna talk about is, as we look at how to best use the 1.5 million, um, you know, we want your input philosophically on how we should be approaching this fund. So we're not looking for resolution or here's the, here's the way we want you to do it tonight, but as we move into January and we start looking at these, kinda like the CPC, we'd like to know, you know, let's, we wanna reserve 10% for community-related things or something like that. Um, and maybe it's not specific dollar amounts, but we'd like to get a philosophy from the Select Board about how you wanna use those funds. Or say, you know, you guys do it. I mean, if there's no philosophy, I mean, we just don't wanna spend a lot of time as we evaluate these projects and prioritize, we need some perspective, because again, our role is to recommend to you. There's two dimensions to consider too, is if it weren't complicated enough. One, there's eligible uses, so you've probably seen various lists, and there's, everyone seems to cut the categories in different ways, but there are areas of eligibility in ARPA that, um, are pretty diverse and not necessarily all related to COVID. And so, in the, in the form we set out, we listed those priorities, there's a fact that lists those priorities, but it's, and I know Kate had sent out questions that list the priorities, everything from, you know, one category is responding to the public health emergency or its negative economic impact, which includes like anything from financial assistance to households that have documented negative impact to uh, forms of loans or grants to impacted industries to paying for mitigation of medical expenses. That's one category. You have categories like revenue replacement, which for us, we haven't done the exercise, we don't expect that to be a big number. Basically, is a, if, if you could demonstrate you lost revenue in your town due to COVID, you can get that replenished, and essentially you can use the funds however you want. It's just revenue replenishment. In this town, maybe that's in the low five figures would be best. We're gonna ask, we're gonna do the exercise to calculate it, but we did not really see a revenue decrease. We are not like some towns that saw a major drop-off in hospitality or tourism. You know, our, our residential tax collection, which is the bulk of our revenue, was, was pretty much, um, not impacted. And when we look at it, maybe we'll find there was some impact, but that probably will not be a big category. Um, water, sewer and broadband projects, that's a big one that is part of this COVID eligibility. So, bringing broadband to people who don't have access to it, and then there's this whole slew of stuff around water and sewer and clean water. Um, we have a lot of things that would fall into the water, sewer, and then HVAC, which I'm not quite clear on which category HVAC, I think that might be under the COVID mitigation part, under a different category, but we have a lot under that in terms of known projects. And then there's, uh, premium pay to employees providing essential work during the public health agent, emergency, so you can essentially retroactively go back and, and provide, uh, money for, I forget the time interval. And then finally, and one that I would like to get your perspective on, or at least supportive, is assistance in the administration, um, basically administrative support. And that would cover consultants or auditor that would assist us in vetting eligibility of a project and in compliance. There's a lot that's involved with this. There's, you're responsible for your own, we get the money, and then basically, it's not like they approve it and they give us the money. We get the money, but we have to basically police ourselves and ensure that we're compliant. The worst thing would be to have a project that you think is eligible, fund it, realize it's not, I don't even know what happens, but essentially you might have to go back and get money from it. And we, we don't wanna do that. Um, and we, we're a three-person committee, um, we're not experts in municipal government or auditing. Um, and I, I'm pretty much, it seems like every town is looking to, to get some support in terms of, um, someone who knows this stuff and can basically be an auditor for this. Um, we don't, we've, we've been meeting, we've met with one firm, we're hoping to meet with some more. Um, I don't have a, a cost estimate. The towns I've seen, like Acton, I think, was allocating $20,000 for this. I'm hoping ours would be less. But one thing I would, before we go too far down the road, it would be good to know, if we do wanna secure that, we would have to come to the Select Board, um, and, and basically get your authorization to do that. So, is that something that's, you're, you're amenable to in terms of?
Can I ask a quick question? Is there anybody here that does not?
How long do we have to spend the money? I think you said at the beginning.
We have, we have till December 31st, 2024 to commit the money, and then, then you have an additional, I think, year to spend it.
Okay.
You'd have to, if you wanted to fund a project that was going to be completed in the following year, you could, as long as you secured it. So you have essentially figured three years to commit the money.
Yeah.
So we have, and that's, that was the other dimension that I was gonna mention, is there's, where do we wanna focus the money if it, you know, or, and then also time. You know, I mean, we have $750,000 now. It doesn't mean we need to apply that all right now. We're gonna get $750,000 next year. Um, you don't wanna leave the money sitting there, however, you don't wanna miss an opportunity that might arise down the road. It's a moving target. So, you know, some general thinking about how you would wanna apply that is something we'd also be looking for. And again, it's, it's not something we're looking for an answer for tonight, but as we start to get a project list, it's gonna be important that it's something you're thinking about and can advise us on.
I think I would personally, I think if you feel that you need the support to make sure that we're doing this right.
And I think Tim would concur with that.
I totally support that, because we don't wanna make mistakes and have to, have to go back and, and repay it.
No, there's a, and.
It's scary, the, the reporting element, it's scary.
Yeah, I'm totally, totally supportive of that. And also, just to take the next step, I think anything where, if there are things we can do where we're helping residents who were directly impacted by this, I think that's a very good use of that, that money. I think if we have to with the broadband, hopefully we can negotiate with Comcast and offset a lot of that and not, not do it. I think that would also be good. And then the projects that, you know, like HVAC that we may have to do anyway, but we can do it in a different way because we're using this money.
Yeah.
And shy away from anything that is committing us to more spend in the future.
One-off projects, like a long, like capital projects, right?
Right, yeah. Not hiring staff, things like that.
Yeah, the other, the other variable is the state has recently approved monies and they will be funding. So we might have a project that we say, hey, this would be great for ARPA, but we also need to look at whether we can get the state first to fund it with their ARPA. And, and make sure this is all moving at a pace where we're not just sitting around for three years waiting for answers.
And we also don't wanna spend the money just for the sake of spending the money, but what happens if we don't spend all the money?
We give it back.
Okay, I mean.
No, we get, we.
We're gonna get it.
We got $750,000 that's sitting in an account. Yeah.
I don't think we need to, you know, I guess, my, my own feeling is we shouldn't scramble to spend money for the sake of spending money. We should spend the money for the real things that we really need. But.
I'm sure there's lots of.
And I'm sure that we can find a way, a really good place to find all the money.
You know, one of the questions I have is, you know, we have, as, as we were talking in the previous session about the budget, we have a lot of pressures on the budget and we can philosophically, we, I'm sure we could use every dollar of ARPA to cover a capital project that we would otherwise be doing in the next three years funded by, um, a tax base. I'm not saying we should do that, but, you know, figuring out how much you spend on known and necessary expenses versus, um, coming up, you know, if, if you, you know, when funding comes available, suddenly all these ideas come in and, you know, you can spend it on stuff that's known and we have to do, or you can spend uh, some on stuff that is opportunistic to help people like we norm, like we wouldn't out of a budget process have a, have a program to help families that were impacted. We have that opportunity here. What's the balance, right? Because the one is helping all of our taxpayers in a smaller way, and another is a very targeted, and some of this just may come out of the projects themselves and how valuable they are. Um, but that's, that's the other balancing act of how do we wanna proportion this? I, my, my sense in looking at what other towns are doing is there will be some targeted opportunities to help people and the community in a meaningful way. In dollar amounts, it's probably not gonna be the majority of the, you know, 1.5 million dollars. Um, but I think as a, as a committee, we're committed to spending a lot of time, and it would probably be easier just to say, well, let's just do HVAC with ARPA from a paperwork and reporting standpoint, but I think, I know John has, has been a really good add to the committee in terms of representing citizens. But I, I think most of our work will be around figuring out what are those other things? Whether it's helping, uh, you know, a community program that, you know, wasn't able to do its activities over the last year and they're on hard times, and maybe it's a, you know, a grant or something like that. There'll be a lot of that work.
So, you know, I looked at the, 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 the question, you know, that you, and so I was gonna have it, and I thought it was very helpful. And, um, of the seven of the six areas that you listed, um, you know, I, I think one of them that I think we can take off the list is, um, the trillion day question, because we already know from town council that that is very problematic. But if I do here, um, and, you know, it doesn't allow for people. You know, it doesn't allow for people to work remotely, that has qualified. And town council often states, you know, concerns about it. I don't know if everybody on the board has changed the look at what town council says about that. But I think, my opinion, we can, we can take that off the list, given John not being quite as sure of that. And, and I mean, when I look at the, you know, the top categories in my mind, that's health and revenue replacement, it's me, I think it's reasonable to be looking at those.
Actually, revenue replacement is not one that we can probably justify.
We'll look into it.
We'll look into it, but I don't think-
I don't think we're-
Sorry, sorry. And I guess, I'm sorry, I-
Negative, negative economic impact.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
I'm more, um, yeah, sorry. I was looking at existing items in our budget that we qualify, that we're planning to spend the money on, unlike the, you know, areas, facilities.
Uh, I see what you're saying.
That's a difference, that's a difference.
Public health, I think we're-
Microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks.
I do think public health is going to be largely taken by the state. From what I've been reading, it looks like they have huge amounts that they're, they're going to be-
So that, that's a question.
And we would prefer not to spend the federal ARPA money on-
If the state's-
Timing of the state.
The state money, yeah. Do we know?
They have, they're, I think they're close to signing that into, just awaiting the governor's signature the last I heard. How, now how long it takes to administer? I don't know.
And determine the, you know, how much is, because Carlisle is clearly going to get a very small piece of that from at least what I'm seeing in terms of it's based on both, you know, income, uh, communities that were hit harder as well as, you know, size.
My biggest, my biggest, not concern, but the things that benefit most from pairing up with the budget process are the capital.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to take stuff out of the operating budget and say, oh, we can fund that through ARPA.
Well, we wouldn't anyway, but yeah.
But, but, and then stuff like that, we might say, well, you need a little more time to figure it out and that's fine. We can, you know.
You don't have, you don't have to commit the funds for it.
Yeah, I want to make sure anything that might be on the warrant at town meeting is considered before we, and you know, the question was-
You wouldn't want to put it on the warrant if you were going to otherwise-
No, no, or, you know, it was, yeah. If, if we could, if we decided we wanted to fund something out of ARPA that would otherwise be on the warrant, we want to take it out of the warrant and make sure we're not-
Right.
But so those are the projects I'm kind of keen on.
Right.
Triageing.
On the front end, yeah.
So let me, yeah, so this is really good. Let me go where Barney was going and let's eliminate a couple of things as a framing. So I, I think I agree with Barney. We got good advice from council that premium pay is probably not something we should consider at this time. The other question I have on the elimination front is item category three, services to disproportionately impacted communities is not us in any case, right? We're nonqual on that?
It, it, it could be, um, and that, you know, I'm going to, so part of my conversation with, with the school tomorrow is to talk about ARPA in particular, because if you, if you really look at some of these categories, so education assistance, early learning, education assistance.
I get that category. And my question is, does, is it a non-starter from the definition of us being disproportionately impacted communities?
No, but I mean, early learners are considered a disproportionately impacted community.
It's not us as a Carlisle community. It's the subgroup.
So it includes, so what you'll see is some towns is they'll have, they'll have, you know, they might, they might do a subsidy or something with a, with a pre-K program and put that under disproportionate. Because they'll, they'll say early learners were disproportionately affected by COVID. So-
Or could be, could be going back.
Yeah, special ed, yeah.
Yeah, it could be going back and if, if the costs for hiring additional teachers or additional support staff because of the pandemic weren't covered somewhere else.
Yeah.
Potentially, or going forward, if we did a summer program that was for children that were not, hadn't made the progress they should have made during COVID.
In most cases, it would be March.
Yeah, March four.
Of last year forward.
Last spring though, not last, right? March of 2021.
Twenty-one.
Yeah.
Um, but again, this is where we get into the nitty gritty of what's eligibility definitions. It gets-
And is that, so you've got a, you said a consultant and an auditor.
Well, the same, it'd be the same person.
At the front end, right?
It would be the same, it would be the same person.
Okay.
And they would continue because they would be helping-
And what I'd like to do, the way it would work ideally is we'd come up with a list of stuff and we'd have the documentation to support it. And then we could, we could work with someone and say, are these, can you verify these are eligible before we spend a lot of time? And maybe they say, yeah, and they know all the ins and outs and the changes going on and can kind of-
Is somebody going to help you identify that consultant?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's where we're working with Tim and John was going to source some people and-
ISM A P C.
Yeah.
So let me ask you a couple of other questions on this affordable housing. Now that number three is open is, is that a just, I mean, we have people who would like to live here, but just can't. If that's where we've mostly approached affordable housing in the past.
Yeah, I don't know the, that subcategory definition all that well. It, that doesn't feel like a good fit for us.
I agree. I, I just asked a question. So let me ask you some other ones then, um, to help at least me frame out. So-
This is disclaimer time. We are not experts on all the eligibility requirements.
But, okay, so public health, we kind of talked about, and it seems that the public health is, it's not clear to me, is it directly a COVID-related thing? Or if you get, obviously the vaccination testing, but if you get into the capital investments to physical plants, I guess that's your HVAC kind of thing, right?
Yeah, so preventative, prevention, um, my understanding is that capital investments would be your HVAC. You have things like, um, mental health services, substance abuse services, other public. So my understanding is you could have a program that isn't specifically COVID, but it's a, something that's been aggravated by COVID, mental health substance.
So mental health, right? So that would be-
Sure.
Right.
So then we, we covered number two, so I'm going to skip that.
You know, I just, we did have a, a home of persons during the questions. I don't know.
Well, actually, yeah, no, yeah, I didn't mean, I meant we did number eight. Number two, so yes, that's a question.
This is a very big catch-all, by the way, especially when you look at-
What's number two?
Negative economic impacts.
Right, right.
So you have aid to tourism, travel and hospitality is a very popular category. Well-
Again, in town-
Well, for instance, you could-
We did have food programs. We didn't run them ourselves, but we had-
The neighborhood, yeah, or, or the, the, um-
But that's a question. Does it have to be backwards looking like we did have?
No, 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 no.
No, but I'm just saying that since we did have them, we know we have a need for them.
We know we have a need, so that was really-
Well, let me give you an example. So Sylvia sent me an email. I'm the cons comm liaison and she mentioned in there, you know, we might need to buy some new trail signs, like $5,000 or something. Like where would, where would that go on the budget? Is it a warrant? I'm like, well, it's not a warrant. I don't know. Let's look at that. And then that might be the type of thing that might be eligible for ARPA fund. Because if it's, if it's trails used by people out of town, it's a pretty liberal definition of tourism. But if, you know, if we wanted to do something to improve the trails, that you could probably put under tourism.
I'm, I'm going in slightly different direction. I'm going in the way where Kate's going. There is a, we know there's sort of an ill-defined need for some people here who are economically hurting and are generally in this community too proud to play their-
I think what we would have to do is, this is where we would need the consultant to say, this is what we want to achieve. How do, what's, how do we get there?
So one of the categories, somebody mentioned posting in the churches, if anything, great idea. But do we run crosswise if we were to say fund a church, say FRS, which generally is much more in touch with those needs than we are?
We can, you can aid nonprofit organizations and I'm assuming churches.
Include and-
I'm, I'm, the, the challenge with that is, um, we're responsible. This came up, we were contacted by the Carlisle Cultural Council and, you know, they were looking into ARPA funds for the various groups they support, right? Like the, the opera and, you know, these are things that are impacted.
Yeah.
And, um, the, the challenge for us, if, if we were to give money like a nonprofit who then gives the money to people, we are responsible for all of the tracking and compliance. And there's extra compliance to make sure every dollar is spent on ineligible use. So we would have to both, we would have to monitor the nonprofit, make sure they're complying. Those things, if, if the opportunity is good enough, we should do it, but there is an overhead out problem that, that happens with some of these.
Right, but I guess I wouldn't, I'm, I, as I, not to get too tangled up in the mechanics. Because we are a bunch of smart people and A, we can do that. It's not a huge scale. And B, at least in my experience with FRS, because that's, it's, I'm affiliated with it, but I'm sure it's the same for the others. They have a pretty good-
But we might be able to just give the aid directly to, it might be easier for us to just give the aid.
Directly to the organization.
But I think the point here was the gathering point.
Yeah.
The place people trust. When people who need it see your form, some might be intimidated.
Yeah, well, this is not meant for an individual.
No, I understand. So, but it's a good idea in my opinion. It goes along with what Nathan was saying. I think if we were to leverage the social organization, COA, church, whatever.
So I was going to talk to, you know, Carlisle Public School has, you know, they, they-
They know who's on a free and reduced lunch.
Exactly. And, and let them be the aggregators.
Yeah.
So my last, I just want to give you my last question and then I'll leave it. Thank you. Provision of government services and transfers to other units of government and transfers to non-entitled units, which, which were, were you looking at? Six and seven.
Okay, so revenue replacement is just, by their formula, if we said, if, if by their calculation, if we said Carlisle lost $60,000 in revenue due to COVID, we could basically take $60,000 out of it and put it into our operating budget. And we wouldn't have to, it wouldn't have to be, it doesn't matter how we spend it.
Yeah.
We can just, we could tap that amount to, to augment our tax base.
You notice there's no carrot.
No.
What is the carrot, man?
Reporting.
Yeah, so extra reporting.
Some communities that again, lost a lot of money, their first step is to say, well, how much can we just take out and just use without any?
You didn't really use it.
No, we'll do the exercise, but I'm guessing it's maybe in the low, like high teens of thousands in the, in the scope of 1.5 million dollars. It may not even be-
I fingered on it the entire last year.
Yeah. What about the transfer?
Oh, administration transfers to other, this is mostly around, so I don't know what that is. This is really, the administration, administrative is really intended for what we're talking about of getting someone to help us do this.
I get that point.
That might be intended for cities or other, if you're a, if you're not a town and you're another thing, I don't know.
David, I'm going to ask you to pause for a minute. Only I'm looking at the time. And I want to make sure that Nathan, if you have anything you want to add to this before we need to end as part of our agenda.
I gave my preference summary at the beginning.
You had your opportunity and Kate, did you want to add anything? I know you're on the committee, so, um, all right. And John, I know you're, I think, is he on the?
Thank you. There's a John on the call.
Yeah. John, I don't know if you want to add anything to what Scott has shared with us. We certainly appreciate your service as well as Scott and Kate's on this committee. Well, you're mute, maybe muted, John.
Okay, hi.
There you go.
All right, hi. Anyway, my only, uh, I think Scott is giving you a very good rundown from my understanding and perspective of everything. So I'm, I'm on board with a lot of what he said and, and, uh, and as he suggested, my commitment is a bit more on the social side of things versus, you know, the budgets and so forth. So it has been a bit of a challenge, but I think we're going to get more replies as time goes on. I don't know how, from my brief discussions with some people, I think they're aware of, of what's on offer. Um, and they're going through the motions now of trying to figure out exactly how to apply for the monies, the grants. And I'm hoping that we'll see, you know, council of aging in particular, that's what I've been discussing with. And they have, they have, interestingly enough, one of the things that they're thinking about, which was a bit contrary, I don't know if it's contrary to what you were suggesting on the, the premium pay. They have salaried people, not salary, they have people who work to, who, drivers, who are Carlisle residents mostly, who have been very negatively impacted, who need this money because it's, it's their, you know, on top of social security, it's what's helping them pay the bills. And they've been negatively impacted. And so I think she is going to, uh, Mr. Ingersoll is going to apply for some kind of enhancement on their pay. But that, that's the only thing that I can add to this discussion, I think, at this point in time.
Okay.
And I think John made a, made a, a good point in his conversations. So anyone listening out there, I think, you know, some people are, well, I'm not sure, should I, I don't have all my, my Ps crossed and my Is dotted, you know, so I'm going to wait. No, I mean, the point of the little form, and it's not overly in-depth, we really want to surface stuff. So if people have an idea and it's not all thought through, I, we'd rather hear about it. Um, and we, we have time to, to figure it out, um, later. But our goal as a committee right now is just to surface as much of the need so that we can, we can prioritize. Because we don't want to do a bunch of projects only to find out in, you know, 16 months, there was this golden opportunity that, that we didn't see.
So where do people find the form and where do they send it?
That's a good question. Um-
So you said earlier, we need to get posted something on our town website, right?
So it was distributed to, um, all the things, I, uh, all the town boards, all that. My email is on there, so people send the form to me, striola@gmail.com. And, um, you know, if they need a form, they can contact me. I sent it to the mosquito, hoping that they could put the information out there. Um, and then, you know, we can post it on the town website, or if anyone who received it, I'm hoping that they forward it along um, to people that they think might be interested in.
And you know, we could also, speaking of the churches, you know, FRS has their newsletter. We can certainly go into that.
I think it'd be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know the best mechanism to do that, but-
Well, we can, I can take care of FRS. I'd be, I don't know, how many churches is there?
Yeah, well-
Like FRS and the-
And congregational, yeah, yeah.
And I don't know, you know, we're talking about paving the, the, um, lots and everything. I don't know how the, does region get in ARPA? The regional school district get an ARPA allocation or anything?
Through D E S I.
Through D E S I, okay.
Yeah, through the, yeah, through the-
I think across the board, you know, there might be ways to alleviate some of these, especially the infrastructure project with, you know.
So back to the opening, which is like some guidance, like relative levels from us. When do you want to take it up? Again, from a very broad, you know, perspective, what's your plan on that?
So your deadline for the first round is January 7th and then you'll have some sense of what's come.
I think our goal is to kind of use January, February to identify, like evaluate. We, we really need to get the external resource so we can start-
Right.
Vetting the eligibility of the, of these requests and, you know. So, you know, I think from, from our standpoint for the select board, and again, you'll be able to see the list and, and that'll help inform your opinions, but probably in the, you know, mid, mid, mid-January timeframe, few weeks into January to kind of reconvene and-
Yeah, that would be good.
Just so we're not spending a lot of time in an area that-
Right. And you'll have a sense then of which, which, what kind of proposals have come forward.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, people have just had more time to think about it.
Would you like to engage a consultant for these things?
I mean, we-
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
And so once you know who you'd like to hire, you'll come back to us.
I presume the process would be-
Approval.
You'd have to, yeah, I don't, this is like, I don't even quite know how it works.
We're ready to do that whenever you-
You would need approval for the, for the authorization of the ARPA funds to engage the consultant, right?
Yeah, yeah. Because we, because we, the select board, all of their work is to present proposals to us for funding. We have to vote on-
I'm trying to fast track some people. What do we need to know in order to approve that? Can we approve it now?
No, no.
Because we, because that, because that's just going to delay it up.
And before we approve anything, we got to really make sure we've verified the eligibility, make sure we know it's eligible, what category. And, you know, we, I think we all want an external resource to do that eligibility certification versus us.
I think Nathan meant, what do we need just to approve the auditor?
The actual, we need a-
We'd need a contract. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So as soon as you have that, yeah.
Oh, no, I mean, yeah, as soon as we have, we'll get on the, and, and Tim's, uh, very involved in that process. So as soon as we have something, we will get on your agenda.
Okay. Um, we should call this part of the agenda to a close, but really appreciate, um,
Thank you guys.
The presentation and, and, um, good food for thought and-
Get the word out, you know?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
We will follow up. Um, thank you, John.
Thank you. Bye.
All right. Yeah, sorry, those of you on Zoom.
Pre-COVID.
Yeah. Okay, um, excellent. So- Okay, um, excellent. So, thanks, Scott. Bye-bye. Thank you, Kate. Um, all right, so, um, I see that Drew is here, Drew McMaro, the chair of the, come on up to either the. Probably the chair works best for you, and then people can hear you two that are on the Zoom call. Uh, so this is Drew McMaro, who's the chair of the Recreation Commission. And, um, we're looking forward to hearing more about the pickleball grant.
Can you guys talk about presentation?
Yeah. But I think we're gonna, we want to try to.
There's not a lot of visuals on it, but there's.
Well, it's just easier for people that are on the Zoom call to be able to see it rather than trying to hear everything we say. Yeah. Okay.
So this is an update on what we have talked about before.
All right, so there, yep, you're all set. Okay.
Uh, and, uh, you know, this is a, this is a, this is a, uh, so I think since our last meeting, you know, the feedback from inviting the public into the process and having public hearings on, uh, since we last spoke, it's, you know, we've learned that there's a strong desire for a town meeting vote to approve the project. Uh, that there's a strong consensus that the proposal will use to incorporate the facilities to community center in the same area, uh, and a desire for more transparency by the donor. And so we've adapted the proposal accordingly. We worked with the donor.
Could you just pull the mic closer to you?
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Is it on? Is it green?
Needs to be green. There you go. That would help.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
Hopefully I could be heard on the other mics. All right. Um, so we've, we've made changes to the grant agreement. We've made changes to the whole site planning process associated with this. Uh, we've engaged in, in some, uh, deeper planning about the community center, which I will go into here. Uh, we've encouraged the donor to come forward, and they did. They made a, a good, uh, they did a good interview with the mosquito and made themselves, uh, very well-known, uh, in this process. Um, so, uh, on page four, the changes to the grant agreement now, uh, incorporate a town meeting vote as a contingency for the project. If you've got the grant agreement, uh, that comes in the form of the town authorizing a, uh, enterprise fund, uh, to manage the, um, to manage the, uh, the pickleball facility. Uh, the donor has pledged a, uh, grant to a future community center of 250,000. So they've, uh, they've been very generous to, uh, up, uh, their contribution to the town, uh, to make this possible. Uh, you know, our grant agreement now expands the site planning guidelines beyond the contours of Mosley and into Lower Banta. And I'll spend some time talking about that in the site planning process. Um, and then, you know, adding the, the town meeting vote into the contingencies. Uh, and I think this is important, uh, for all of you because of the, sort of the key first step, the select board would authorize the signing of the grant agreement. And then, uh, the grant agreement, uh, really puts the donor, uh, obligates the donor to follow through if we meet various contingencies. And those contingencies include an approval by the Recreation Commission, by the school committee because of the use of the Lower Banta, uh, piece, uh, by the select board, and a favorable town meeting vote as I described, and a successful site plan review. So although the, uh, although the authorization of the grant agreement, um, you know, doesn't, doesn't, uh, put this, uh, project, you know, uh, determinately on a, uh, on, on course, it, it just obligates the donor to fulfill their obligations if we fulfill ours. But we have several steps where we could decide not to move forward. On to page five. Tim, uh, when I talk about the site planning and incorporating, uh, you know, the planning for a community center and, uh, expanding the area, I just want to be clear a little bit about what I mean by Lower Banta. I've drawn some rough lines here. It's an area that incorporates, uh, the current, uh, Little League field, uh, and, uh, also a bit of the woods, uh, in there. And it's an area that, uh, I actually do not know, uh, specifically the acreage of, but I estimate it somewhere between like seven and nine acres, sort of depending upon where the.
Roadblocks.
You're not actually going into the cemetery, right? Uh, that line, uh, you know, according to my map, that doesn't line doesn't go into the cemetery's land. The cemetery may already, uh, have, uh, encroached on, uh, Banta, so. I think that the, I think that the engineering.
There's already graves there, so.
Yeah, an engineering review needs to, needs to deal with that a bit. But there is certainly land on that side of the roadway, and that, you know, probably in a future planning project, the roadway were shifted a little bit, that might be, uh, you know, toward the cemetery, that might be the best way to, to maximize the available land.
Yeah, I think there are graves there already. So we'll have to take a closer look.
Maybe this is, maybe this is.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, in terms of using the Lower Banta, uh, area, yeah, I would point out that, that the 2019, uh, community center.
Okay.
Oh, okay. That the 2019 community center feasibility study already determined that the town should combine Mosley and the Lower Banta for the use of a, of a community center. And, and part of this is because of the contours of the Mosley land and, um, the, uh, you know, there's some wetland in the back of that that makes, uh, developing it, um, for something as big as a community center, uh, you know, more problematic and having a lot of parking spots and so forth. Um, but enlarging that, the site planning scope will make citing both a pickleball and a community center much easier. So the first step under the grant agreement, uh, is this engineering review, uh, that we would, we would conduct, funded by, uh, 53D, uh, accounts that we can authorize. Uh, and that, that, uh, you know, that first step would be to have the engineers actually build a conceptual, uh, site plan where they can draw the rectangles of what might be possible in terms of where a community center would go and where a pickleball center would go, where a public well, uh, Nathan, could be cited with the, with the necessary setbacks, how much parking, uh, could be, uh, a part of that. And also, you know, if we have a vision of, uh, expanding this eventually into really kind of a community complex, where maybe future tennis courts or future outdoor basketball courts, uh, you know, incrementally, as the town finds the need and the funds to be able to do these things, uh, where those could go as well. And those were sorts of, the sorts of things that came out of the community center study as things that the town, uh, desires to have. Um, so that's the, uh, that's the sort of the site planning. Um, you know, I, I would, I do want to say a little bit about, about this land because I think in, uh, uh, there have been circulated a lot of proposals over time about the use of this land, other uses for this land. You know, at the various times it was proposed for affordable housing, uh, you know, that, uh, fire or public safety buildings have been speculated as going there. I understand completely that the town does not have as much land as it needs for all of its municipal planning purposes. But, uh, you know, I will advance the argument that this is the most compatible use of, recreation is the most compatible use of that land with school property, really. You know, the, the potential for a future school on, uh, on Upper Banta, you know, really should suggest that recreation belongs in the space. I think it does kind of, you know, puts the dominoes in motion, right? If you know that this land is going to be used for recreation, then you'll be shopping for land for other municipal purposes. You'll know what those, what those are. Uh, but I don't think that, you know, we should let another decade go by while we, um, deliberate about whether this land is for recreation or not. I just don't think that another use of it really makes sense. So, uh, I'll leave that out there for you all to deliberate, because I think, and, and, you know, a town meeting would have a chance to weigh in on our argument too, through a process now where each of these boards, the school committee ourselves, and you and the town meeting all can weigh in and say, yes, in fact, we ratify this land as, as recreational use. Uh, so as I said, you know, a key learning from our hearings is the strength of support in the town for, uh, for building a community center. Uh, and, uh, that, uh, the sort of, uh, silence about the 2019 study, uh, that sort of followed it was not because people didn't really want this, uh, but maybe because they weren't sure how we could make it possible or how we could afford it. Uh, we wholeheartedly support, uh, a, uh, multi-generational, uh, community center, uh, in this area. Uh, and although we view that the plans that Abbot has threw in the, uh, in the 2019 feasibility study as being too ambitious for our town's needs and for our town's needs. We've looked at, uh, all of the area towns, uh, that are similar to us in terms of, uh, population, uh, and proximity. And the square footage of that facility was just not consistent with a population like ours. Uh, we would have the, the largest by, uh, three X, uh, community center, uh, for a town under 8,000 population in this broader area, if we wouldn't do that. Um, so, uh, you know, we have talked to the Council on Aging about that and found them very amenable to, uh, resizing that proposal. I will be presenting to them, uh, at their next meeting on December 14th about this. And I think that a more modest-sized building of 10,000 square feet can really fit, uh, what the town needs, uh, and, and desperately needs. You know, I would mention again that the, uh, the senior community really does not have resources in this town. Uh, in a lot of ways, we have this tremendous infrastructure of school, of playgrounds, uh, and of, uh, playing fields to, uh, you know, take a, uh, child, uh, through the, uh, you know, preschool, uh, to the age of 18. Uh, and then, uh, once your nest is empty, we kind of drop you to walk alone on the Carlisle trails as far as recreational resources go. With this, uh, a community center with its most important purpose being also a senior center and having a senior center contained within that, uh, but also, you know, aside a pickleball facility which can be used for other purposes, uh, you know, occasionally for sure. It's like a wide-open gym when you want it to be, but it's also, uh, you know, a, a great state-of-the-art, uh, pickleball facility which, uh, really fits the senior community. The idea of having both of those in the same proximity is, you know, a lot of towns' dreams, honestly, in terms of the kind of municipal planning that other towns are struggling with in terms of, uh, developing resources like this for seniors. Uh, we think that the funding of this needs to be privately developed. We've heard, uh, from, uh, you know, the various, uh, presentations about the, the, um, capacity of the town and its capacity for debt issuance. And I think that a community center needs to be primarily a privately-funded initiative. You need to be, uh, beginning to build the plans and then fundraising for them, and this will give us a good kickstart. Uh, and we've been, uh, seeking to negotiate that that enterprise fund for the pickleball would also include, uh, the community center within it, which, uh, you know, to the extent that, uh, the pickleball, uh, memberships or court fees, uh, produce excess revenue would help to maintain, uh, a community center and offset its costs, uh, as, as part of it. I'm, I'm gonna stop there because the rest of these are slides I presented to you before, uh, or at, uh, other public hearings, including the, uh, economics and so forth. I'll take questions on any of those. I want to make sure we have enough time to deliberate and get your questions about the grant agreement in that gap.
Well, I just want to say, Drew, to kind of kick things off, that I think, um, you know, my, when I first read through this, I thought, you know, there's been really some significant improvements, um, and, and benefits to the town from the original, um, concept that the, the donor put forth to us. And, um, so I'm, I'm, uh, very happy to see those changes. And, um, I want to just open it up for all of us to comment or ask questions. But I, I do want to recognize the, um, the, the willingness of the Recreation Commission to, uh, take in the input that you received and to really look seriously at, um, how to meet the needs of, um, a broader array of people here in town. And I think, I think this is a great step in that direction.
I mean, I'll piggyback onto that. I mean, I think it's all part of the process, right? Is, you know, you, you get input, and I think, Drew, you and your team have done a really, really great job at, at, um, meeting where possible, you know, the, the, the feedback that you've gotten, and I really truly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody have any general comments, or should we just jump right into some specific questions?
So, yeah, my questions, I, I thank you, and I want to say also I'm very pleased that there's now this dialogue between you, RecCom, COA, schools, to start approaching this. And I agree, the community center is a need. Um, and I'm happy that the Standard Foundation, you asked, one of the few that will. Uh, so we've talked about getting the keyboards on, you know, to agree in principle, or if you've asked, and then town meeting vote. So one question that I have, Drew, is in order to prepare for town meeting, and you make reference to the engineering study and all that, and I, I understand you didn't present it this way, but I understand that you would like to have that engineering study completed for town meeting?
Yeah, so the conceptual site plan. Uh, an, an engineering study goes, you know, as a proposal goes kind of all the way through site planning, review, approval, and permitting. We wouldn't need to go all that way because there wouldn't be no, there would be no need to get a permit for something we weren't going to be authorized.
And you would use RecCom funds to do that as a.
Yes, uh, we can, although the COA is interested in participating, so we may use some combination of the 53D.
Okay, and, and do you think there's enough time to get a reasonable study?
Yeah, yeah.
And by when would we have to, do we have to authorize that, or you and the?
I would need you to get into the, I would need you to authorize the grant agreement. I think, Tim, you have time, uh, once authorized by the press board. Uh, and then, uh, you know, we would, uh, we would hire the engineers. There isn't a, there isn't a, um, there's an exception for all the public bidding requirements for engineers, which is, uh, makes it expedite.
So if we authorize the funding agreement, though, it's still contingent on the town meeting vote.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's helpful. And, um, the other question really that I have, well, I have two other questions. One is, the grant, the funding agreement is for the capital basis, the 1.5 million builds the building.
Yes.
It does not contribute to the operating expenses.
No.
And so I guess what I'd like to see is kind of a worktake scenario. In other words, how much exposure, you know, I don't want to get into the P and L today, but, you know, it's got this revenue forecast. But if it doesn't materialize, what's the, you know, minimal one would, we would need as a town to fund this? If it just, you don't get money outside of the, you know, just to understand in the context of taking money for, like ARPA, taking money for capital projects, but being on the hook for the operating expenses, I think.
Yeah, right.
Um, and the other comment I guess I have is, I wouldn't dismiss either town-funded or a co-funding of town and individual donors for the RecCom. If it's important enough, it deserves its place in the priority list along with public safety and so forth. Our experience with, you know, Louis Salami, and, well, you've been part of it because you successfully raised money for the athletic fields and contests. But we were very unsuccessful when we built the school building to try to get matching funds to build the second gym. And we are not funded.
And we didn't have Drew working on it.
What?
And we didn't have Drew working on it.
Yeah. No, we didn't have Drew working on it, that's true. But we had Louis Salami working on it.
Yeah, I think the environment has changed a lot, um, uh, economically, uh, around that issue. And you'll find that, you know, many towns are really turning to these kinds of public-private partnerships to fund things.
Yeah.
Like, uh, recreation. And so when I hear, you know, John Valentine, I think, a, a, a few weeks ago, present, it was to all of you or to the Master Steering Committee, maybe it was to the Master Planning Committee, about the debt issuance and the schedule for it, I took note that there was no money for a community center. That there rarely wasn't money for, uh, for, um, you know, to, to fund things that are more important arguably than a community center. Uh, and so, you know, we'll make it happen, you know, we can make it happen with a, in a different way, if need be.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and I would say on the, uh, operating economics, because this keeps coming up, and I, I find it, uh, an important point. Uh, pickleball is in enormous demand, like, well, I, I suspect we'll have a bigger problem managing the fact that it'll be sold out before it's built, and that there'll be a lot of, uh, you know, pressures on, you know, when can I use this thing? And there would be, um, an operating, you know, a fear of an operating deficit.
Kate, do you have some?
My, I guess.
Don't forget the mic.
Uh, my only concerns are about aesthetics of the building and how it'll, uh, sorry, uh, and how it would then also integrate with the, the community center, because they would not like to have kind of an elegant, nice community center and then the, you know, um, thing.
Warehouse-looking structure.
Warehouse-looking structure attached to it, because I think it'll diminish the value of a community center. So I'm just, that's a.
I think you just volunteered for the design committee.
That's what I heard. Yeah.
Uh, you know, I had put in some images, uh, page 11.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm objecting to.
Yeah.
I have to say, having been to both of Kate's houses, she'd be a very good person to be in the design community.
Yeah, I mean, steel-framed buildings do have a, a certain aesthetic look, I guess.
A certain cachet, you know?
Uh, the visual aesthetic that I imagined initially at this project was something looking like a barn, you know, kind of fitting into Carlisle in that way, but.
Yeah, if it looked like a barn, it was attached to like an old, an antique farmhouse, which is, that would be one thing.
In front of it. In front of it.
Yes, you know, that too.
We can take some of those implements or at the transfer station.
Like the tractor at Bates, you know, it's just a climbing structure, but that would be okay, but just.
Yeah, and maybe we need to plant some nice trees next to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To have it look attractive, otherwise nobody will gain from that.
Well, I want to just clarify something so that it, you know, gets reported accurately. So, what you would like is for the Select Board to authorize Tim to sign the grant agreement as it's written now, but that, what, that does not mean that the Select Board is.
Approving the project.
Is approving the project, although what it does allow is for, can you go ahead with just the Select Board approval and begin the process of finding an engineer to do the conceptual site plan, so you don't need the School Board approval and then the, obviously Recreation Commission, but, so that could come afterwards. Those things just need to be in line before it goes to town meeting.
Yes.
For the enterprise fund warrant article to be voted on.
And the other committees that need to weigh in, the School Committee, the Planning Board, town meeting, they all need that conceptual site plan in order to make a, an informed.
Okay. So, I just want us all to be clear about what we're.
But I would think we should be approving this aspect of the project, you know, in order to.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I would imagine, I don't know if it's a rule, but I think it would be a good practice for us to actually take a formal vote to approve the plan and then.
To approve the grant proposal?
Yeah, to approve the grant proposal in order to sign it, not just sign it and leave it in the.
Yeah.
I would think you would not want to vote, you know, in favor of the grant agreement if you didn't think this was a good idea overall.
So, we should say it's a good idea, and we authorize, that was what I think.
Yeah. And then, again, just to clarify the process, once there is an actual warrant article about establishing the enterprise fund, that would come back to us as a Select Board to, again, determine whether we're in support of that or not, in the same way that it would, the Planning Board would say something about it and other relevant boards.
Right.
Yeah. So, are people comfortable tonight, or do you want to, yeah, sort of look through this further and at our next Select Board meeting decide whether we're ready to vote to? What's the actual language? Is it that we're voting to approve the grant proposal as written and authorize Tim to sign it?
Yeah.
Is that the kind of motion we're talking about, Tim, as you see it?
I think, I think so.
Right, to approve.
Yeah.
And actually, as I realize, it doesn't have your name as a, as a signature, so I'll have to go over that with town council to make sure.
And I'd ask council a question also, is the chair of the board, is the chief executive, I'll have to be the signatory.
Okay.
I don't mind signing it, I just don't want to be the wrong person signing it.
And I think it would be helpful to, also for town council to provide us with the motion and to make sure we're, it clarifies what we're supporting.
Yeah, I did notice that.
And council has reviewed this already, I take it?
Council wrote it.
Our council wrote it?
Our council wrote it. There is, I would, I will say, the version you have is not the last. There's a, there were some changes requested by the donor just today, but those changes I do not find objectionable, so I think I will be able to send you something that I think you should sign.
This is the first version I saw.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Is this my first?
Yeah, thank you, that'd be great.
Yeah, all right, so we'll do that. Any other sort of broad?
Yeah.
I was going to do a question from above.
Oh, sure.
I just, I'm just, you ready for that? Is the Select Board going to have its own public meeting to field citizen questions and concerns? I guess, I mean, besides this meeting?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Or is this the time for that?
Maybe we should, yeah, I was going to say we could, yeah, but what we could do is change it a little bit and make the, a portion of it a hearing to allow for general comment, right? Rather than community input.
Not a public, it doesn't even need to be a public.
No. We could just make our agenda, right, right.
But I guess, if we're going to do that, then should we reserve the right to delay the vote till the following meeting? If you hear something?
In January, you mean?
If you hear something in December that gives you buzz, we shouldn't just rattle through?
No, we could, we can always choose to consider the input and then decide in January.
And there's a comment that at the holidays, with so little public notice, people won't be available to attend the next meeting.
Ah, which is a good point, because it's a couple of days before the Christmas holiday.
What, on that note, I mean, I think, Drew, it's, you know, as you've learned in your outreach, it's advisable to go, you know, very methodically through this process so that by the time we get to town meeting, everybody feels like they've had ample time to digest the information. So, on that, if you back up your own timeline on completing engineering studies, what's the kind of latest date we need to dream like we could get this, engineering studies?
Yeah, I mean, if it's like late January, that could be problematic.
So, and does it really need the approval of the grant agreement to authorize you to still hold on an engineering study?
I guess technically not, I mean, we could begin an engineering study.
So, what if, what if we kept this on the agenda for the 21st, and we did say we're going to a little point on this there next meeting, and we opened it again for public input?
In January?
In public, in January, and we voted that night. However, there's two nights of public input.
Yeah, and because I think the public input is important, and that we have, right, and we have said in the past, or, yeah, I have said in the past to the mosquito that we would want to make sure we had an opportunity for community input as a Select Board. All right, so if everybody's comfortable with that on the board, so we're saying that at the meeting on the 21st, we will have community input as part of a discussion about the grant proposal, and we will continue the, into the January, what is that, the 11th? Will be a second opportunity for community input, at which time, if we're ready, we will take a vote. And we can always, if needed, schedule a follow-up meeting sooner than two weeks later if we're not ready to vote, but we, you know, we want to deliberate a little more before we vote. Okay.
There is one more item in the chat, which I would like to have transcribed and read at our next input before we discuss the, or, that everybody should then read or something.
Well, do you want to, you want to wait, you're saying you want to wait and present it as community input at the next meeting, because we're having an open hearing?
Yeah, I think.
We're going to have a community input.
This is for next, this is for the next meeting.
Okay.
It's brought up.
I want to.
It's about the grant agreement, the wording.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, is the grant agreement available to people that would like to see that?
In your reading packet, which I think you might.
No, no, I'm saying, we've all seen it, but I'm just meant the general public.
Yeah, public document.
But you'd have to go, where would somebody find the document now?
Versions of it are on the Recreation website. But, yeah, the latest version is, you know, we can make that available, so let me know where.
So, you'll, you're saying you're going to put it on the Recreation Commission website, this latest?
We'll post it, sure.
Okay, great, so.
Also, public, you can.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, so it would be good to include that in the, well, I guess, if you'll do it through the Recreation Commission, that's the appropriate place. And then, maybe we should also, if you're comfortable with Holly sending out a notice through the Recreation Commission just about the community input opportunity at our next meeting, I'd like to do that as well, if that's all right. Okay, good. All right, we're, I think we're agreed then on our next steps for this?
I said this at the last, at the end of the last section two, the thing comes, because I just wanted to say, and I said a little bit before, we really appreciate the response that this all has.
Thank you. You did a great job with the school, so I just, I'm really happy that you're leading this for us, and thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Drew.
All right, let's go on then to the license for ferns.
I think it's in show.
No, I said earlier, oh, sorry, you guys weren't here yet, that, because we don't have the language yet, that's going to go on to the agenda in two weeks, so, yeah, we're going to go right into the ferns liquor license. So, that, do we have a couple of motions on that in the packet, if I recall?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to read that, David, and then we'll get the motion on the floor?
One at a time?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the off-premise license renewal to Berry Bam Barn, sorry, Berry Barn LLC, doing business as Fern's Country Store, located at 8 Lowell Street, Carlisle, Mass. for the calendar year 2022.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. So, any discussion on this? Maybe, Tim, do you want to just offer a little background?
Well, the off-premises means the package store license that the ferns have had for many years, and they've never had any issues with that license, have never had any complaints, and please do check on that. So, the Board has renewed that for the past several years, and.
And by off-premise, off-premise, it doesn't mean you're just going off. This means they can sell it, and people can take it home.
You take it home, then.
Right.
Can people drink in the store? That's, you can no longer.
We're going to get the other two.
Victualers, what do you call it? Victulars?
Victualers license, but we'll get, I think, I was going to say, maybe Kate should do that one. All right, any more discussion upon the first motion?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
I speculate that, the signature.
All right, and then, Kate, would you like to make the second motion?
Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a common victualers, or victual.
I don't think it's.
All right, Nathan, you want to give it a try?
You know, license, Berry Barn.
Berry Barn, yeah.
That's what it says, yeah. Doing business as Fern's Country Store, located at 8 Lowell Street, Carlisle, Mass. 01741 for calendar year 2022.
Again, we should, Tim?
And, yeah, might as well do the other one, and moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to issue a carry-in liquor, oh, license to Berry Barn LLC, doing business as Fern's Country Store, located at 8 Lowell Street, Carlisle, Mass. 01741 for calendar year 2022.
Is there a second? Okay. So, the carry-in license.
Is the BYOB, so to speak.
Do they allow that?
You can bring your own bottle of wine to, like, one of their music events out on the plaza, the little plaza.
Right, or you can consume it in the cafe.
Oh, you can, you can buy it, you don't have to buy it in the store, but.
It wouldn't be BYOB then.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Gotcha.
Carry in.
Gotcha.
And they've had that for many years as well.
Yeah, okay. Any more discussion about these?
So, is the victualers license the food only, or is it the food? So, we've got beverage to buy, food to buy, and then being able to bring in your own?
Right.
So, it's by, is it then assumed by carry-in, or, I guess, if I go buy a bottle of beer in the package store sign, which the license lets me do, and then I walk through the restaurant, or I go to the restaurant, I sit down, where does it show that I actually can drink in there?
Third one.
That's number three.
So, I've carried it in from their liquor store.
Their licenses include that.
Because the restaurant's not part of the liquor store, but, okay.
Right, you've bought it, you've got the.
Then I carry it in.
And you carry it.
And it's implied that if you carry it in, you get to drink it.
Right, or you can carry it in from home.
Right, but you can actually open it and drink it.
Yeah.
Just checking. Okay, no further questions, you know?
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
And victualers license?
Okay.
You should have made motion.
Oh, man. I don't know if I'm saying it right, but.
You carried it off well, Tim.
Better than anybody else.
You only gave us two, is there a carry-in license?
I don't have a carry-in.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
License.
Bad.
Do we have the BYOB? Okay, well, we'll get that for your signature, you voted to approve it, so.
Okay.
There's some fees that have to be paid before any of these licenses are.
Ah, okay, all right. Okey-dokey. Well, then, I think we're ready to move on to the Town Administrator's Report. Tim?
Okay, this, I didn't really have time to put one together, there were a few, few things I wanted to mention, there's actually a cemetery deed transfer motion in my report that I think John was trying to help me out with. It's the.
Okay.
That we do have.
Perhaps you can do that for us?
I move the Select Board vote to transfer land in the public burial grounds to Nathan Brown of 153 Virginia Farm Lane at Green Cemetery, Lot D 202, Graves 1, 2, 3, and 4. Is there something we need to know?
Investing in the state.
That's why you knew where the graves, where the bodies were buried.
Yeah. Do you have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Any discussion?
How many plots?
Four.
Whoa.
All right.
Planning ahead.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm standing.
Extension? All right, one extension.
Yeah, I've got those, the deeds.
Okay.
Burning turkeys.
And then, we do, should we take a quick look at the agenda for the 21st? Or did you want to say something more on your?
Let's see, well, no, I did have a note, I guess, from Chief Fisher, that they got word of a couple of grants that they're receiving. They're part of the Central Middlesex Police Partnership, and they're getting a regional mental health grant of 180,000 to fund mental health clinician, physician, use of follow-up drug overdose and mental health police interventions in the district, so that's one grant they're participating in. They're also getting a $10,000 grant from Maya, our insurer, for some, three new ballistic plate carriers. She says, "Think of them as very thick ceramic vests for our Mark Cruisers." Now, the Maya Risk Management Grant's available on an annual basis, and we try to kind of spread it around a little bit. Two years ago, the police, the fire department got it, last year, DPW got it, and this year we got out of the police department's way, so we try to not submit competing risk management grants, and I'm successful with that the past couple of years. Did we want to talk about the agenda for next time?
Sure.
Chair?
Yeah, so we have a, did you all get your draft of that?
We're going to have to add in here.
Yeah, and we're going to have to add in the pickleball.
You put it in here, that's my time.
It's the 21st, yeah. We don't have to worry about the time, I think, for the purposes of this group.
But I mean, you put that in the front end, going to.
Around the pickleball.
I need to.
Well, that's. So, we make the pickleball first on the agenda as part of community input and just establish that as a. that as a, oh, that's a good idea. Is there any reason not to do that?
If it's part of community input, then we can't really respond to what they're commenting.
You anywhere.
We could choose to.
Yeah, you can always choose.
What would you think, you'd make it a separate community?
It might be setting a precedent, we don't want to set it.
How about right after community input?
Yeah, no.
First thing on the agenda.
After the LEPC report, just get that done, and then.
Well, he's going to, you got.
Oh, yeah, that's, okay. So we would have, what are we going to call it, then? We're calling it a pickleball community input hearing?
You want to call it a meeting?
No, opportunity.
Community input, just community input, huh?
I would say, you know, pickleball, pickleball discussion and.
Community comment.
Yeah. How about community comment?
Yeah.
That have been put.
All right. And then we've, I think we can either wait until January when we see the final, or we see another version of the proposed draft budget, or we could have the conversation about our, the Select Board's feeling about the request for an additional police officer for the FY '23 budget. We could do that at our next meeting, or wait.
We will not yet have had the police, I mean, sorry, the FinCom opinion about it. Did they give that to us tonight? It's not clear.
No, they did not.
They probably should have.
I'm sorry, are you asking about number three?
Yes.
And whether we should even have it?
Should we have that on the agenda in two weeks, or wait until January until there's more clarity?
FinCom, yeah, let's wait until there's more clarity, because I think there's something else that we need to look at before this.
Okay, so we're going to put, save that till January.
We can substitute Kate's insurance.
Right, so we have the.
Yeah, hopefully I will be able to get together with Anish next week. I think we've got an appointment on Wednesday to draft something up.
The, right, council insurance, or health, survivors' health insurance. And then we have, now, we had talked about having this municipal land needs discussion, and Nathan, I think you were spearheading that. Does it make sense to still do that here? It's kind of a good time to do it, given that it's really more of a, just a Select Board kind of brainstorming. Looking at some data that you, if you have an opportunity to gather some general information. Okay. Yeah, okay.
I'm still trying to get over, I thought David was calling the FinCom the ping pong
I just wanted, I just want to look at what else we've said. So the other thing that we had talked about doing at some time in the near future was a discussion about the process for making committee appointments. And we also discussed reviewing the Select Board fiscal '22 goals. All right, and that's on here, all right.
Is this the periodic review? Because we set them, we set those.
Right, we set, well, we, yeah, this is to check in on our FY '22 goals, right?
There's other things, before we close out, what we might do on this, but.
Yeah.
It's actually one thing, but there's two components, but I just want to make sure that we get back to.
One is, we had said that, you know, we wanted to meet with some more of the committees, and, you know, we're running out of time, so we might want to start that. And I can, I can start by asking some of the ones that I'm a liaison to. But I also think that it would be good for us to kind of brainstorm a little bit, what does it mean to be a liaison? Because I've been talking to some of the groups I'm a liaison to, and they had no idea they had a liaison. And so I think it's just important, you know, it's really important that we reach out to them, and we say, hey, we're there for you. And that's the most important thing that we can do, is just make sure that they know that we are that resource, if they need any, any problems. So I've gone to some meetings, well, there's actually just one so far that I've attended, of just kind of like, hey, I'm here, and, but I think just maybe we just kind of need to set a standard as to what does it mean to be a liaison? Maybe we could fit that in in some time, but before we get too far along, where then we're just trying to cram in all of the groups, when we're also trying to do town meeting.
Yeah, so David and I, along with Jen and Tim, had been sort of going through the list of groups that we've, you know, brought in, but you're right, we haven't done that in a couple of meetings, so maybe we should go back and look at that. If you have a suggestion of a particular group, board, committee, whatever, that you think we should invite.
Yeah, it might be good for us to do it, since we're all liaisons to different groups, and some might be a different priority than.
Why don't we do this, let's, let you and I, with Jen's help, let's look at, because I have my own little list, let's look at the ones we have touched this season, right? And we'll put the whole list together, and we'll note where we have met. And we'll send that out, and then we can have that discussion.
So which ones have we met with?
Well, certainly schools, FinCom, border health, council on aging, I'm doing this off the top of my head.
Right, so they've all come in?
They've all come in, and we've had different. I mean, we've touched most of the majors, but we haven't, historical commission.
Right.
You know, I don't know, there's a bunch.
We haven't had cons come in, I don't think.
There's a bunch, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and I'm not so worried about departments as much as I am, you know, the committees and groups.
Right, cons, com, and planning, and there's a few that we have not.
Right.
We've had them on a list that they haven't verbalized.
The department that have committees, I'm interested in, but like, you know, I'm not sure, DPW, you know, police, you know.
Are you saying department or committee more, or both? For your interest.
I, I, I want to make sure that we're supporting everybody very closely, but I think it would be really great for us to sit down with the committees.
The committees, yes.
Yeah.
Anyway, we have a list.
We do have the planning board on for, we do have the planning board at their request. When we originally talked to them, they wanted to wait and come in in January, so they are tentatively, we had put them on our.
And we did, we did, last time we did governance.
Right.
We've only just launched public safety, right?
Yeah.
MFC, have we?
No, I don't think we've had.
We're overdoing that.
Municipal facilities.
Yeah, because we only just really set that up.
Since I've been here.
Affordable housing, we've not, obviously.
Right. So, good idea, let's, let's put it on here, we'll figure out where.
We'll put it in the goal, and we'll.
Or we'll have it as a, yeah, but, right.
It is Christmas week, so we're not going to want to go too late.
Right. Right.
We'll all still be online shopping.
Okay, this is yours, but I'm going to take it from you. Okay, good. So that gives us our next meeting, and, so, Tim, do you want to talk a little bit about your own thinking about where you are?
Sure, sure, and we aren't going to meet later this week, still.
Yes, the four of us, yeah.
I prefer Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday afternoon is fine. Okay.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock on Thursday, then.
Yes, no, thank you, Barney, for the opportunity. I know I've talked to each of you individually at some point about this, but I did want to take the opportunity to announce that it's my intention to retire as Town Administrator next spring, and it's something I've been thinking about for a long time, as I've told some of you, and it's not because of any dissatisfaction with my position here in Carlisle, it's, you know, it's got nothing to do with my dad passing, or any silly lawsuit that I might be a part of at this point in time. It's just the fact, I guess, I'll be 62 years old next April, and, you know, I've got 37 years in the pension system, and I just think I want to do something else, you know? With whatever time I have, I might want to try to do something else.
My firm believes that everybody should change careers every 10 years.
Well, yeah, I think I'm overdue, yeah, for that. So, yeah, I wanted to say something publicly, so that the Board would have the opportunity to talk about the process for, you know, the search process and transition, changes that, you know, might be coming, how that might affect the town meeting and things like that. Until you say it aloud, it's not a thing, you know, you can't really talk about it, because it's all kind of under wraps. So now it's, now it's out there, so now we can hopefully maybe find some time on the 21st to talk about what a process might look like, how the Board may want to handle it, whether you want a search committee or consultants as part of that, or not, or whether you want to talk about, you know, an interim Town Administrator from the point, you know, if I retire in the spring, it might still be a few months away from a permanent hire, you might want, you know, someone to fulfill that gap. So there's time to talk about all those sorts of things. I did want to, in fairness to the Board, let you know what I was thinking, and give you the opportunity to start planning for that. So I guess that's what I wanted to say. Thank you for the opportunity for that, and I thank the Board also for, you know, the kindness that you've shown my family in the last week or so, you know, difficult time, but happens to everybody, one point or another, and it was much appreciated, so thank you.
Wow, you're big news, Tim.
Yeah, it is big news, and we'll have, you know, a lot for us to figure out, and we look forward to working with you on doing that, yeah.
As much as is appropriate, or.
Yeah.
As much as you want me to do, or maybe certain things you don't want me to be part of, and I get that, so that's.
No, I mean, you have a wealth of experience that we definitely want to.
I think, I don't think this is inappropriate for me to say, but when Tim told me this the other day, what I was really most shocked about was that recently somebody said, well, how old do you think Tim is? And I said, I have no idea, and it's not appropriate for me to know, but I'm going to guess he's somewhere around 51.
Yeah, if only not. I never thought I'd say that again, yeah. Oh, I wish.
He'll be celebrating the 12th anniversary of his 51st birthday.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Tim, you know, we go back a long way, FinCom days and full committee days, and, you know, you've always been tremendous support for the town and a wealth of knowledge, so I'm definitely going to miss you, but, you know, I can understand it, and I am envious in a way, I get, my kids are a little too young, even though I'm older than you, my kids are younger than yours, I got a chance to meet your kids, and even, you know, some of their kids, and it was, it was nice to do that the other day under maybe better circumstances, perhaps, but still. So, thank you for your service.
I guess I pictured a bigger crowd when I was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pragmatic. But, yeah, we should, I don't know, we have a lot now going on. We may not need to get all that stuff resolved, you know, next time, but I think we probably want to block.
Start a process, yeah.
Some time to think, there's a lot of moving pieces because of the request for the Assistant TA. There's the Governance Committee and its, you know, process, and it needs to know this now. And we, you know, we need to get those pieces kind of, and then the FinCom and its budgeting, so. We need to let those, we have to sort of sift through those pieces, and perhaps your suggestion of an interim is a wise idea if we.
I would put a plug in for an interim as well, just, even if it's not, not just for a month or two, but I mean, even maybe a year, because whenever you've had a person in a position for that long, their shoes are so, so big to fill that nobody measures up, so you need that kind of, you need somebody that nobody expects anything from, so to speak, to kind of get over that hump, and then, as well as giving you the time to.
Right, and it's, you know.
It's harder to manage a team as an interim than it is.
I understand that, but it makes the next guy's job so much easier, because you're not, you're not always comparing them with.
But there is also.
I was going to point out that he said spring, he did not give a year.
No, I'm saying, that's why, that's why I'm thinking an interim, because I think we might, we might want to take longer.
Well, and there's a piece of that, Kate, that makes sense in terms of the Governance Committee and looking, we're taking a complete look at the government process. Sometimes it's useful for an outsider to come in, spend some time, and give us their opinion of that in the context of, you know, so this is a good idea, it's worth, definitely worth considering.
And there's also the question of the Assistant Town Administrator position, which I still think the town would need, but maybe you'd want to have a new Town Administrator in place for some period of time before they would make that hire, and then they'd be making a hire, you know, they're choosing their own assistant.
And the Assistant Town Administrator could become the town.
Yeah, there's all kinds of possible.
There's all types of things that we need to consider, yeah.
Yeah, but I, when I was, when Tim talked to me, I said, and don't take that assistant out of the budget, because, you know, maybe we need it for, you know, consultant, or, because I'm worried about when we do leave, there's going to be some gaps, and I want to be able to backfill in there, yeah.
Work sort of acts, I believe.
Yeah, so we appreciate you giving us.
Oh, thank you.
Lots of notice, and also, obviously, there'll be much more to come in terms of our appreciation. Thank you, Tim. All right, anything else on our agenda that we need to cover? Are we ready to take a motion to adjourn at?
Did you read the warrants or anything?
9:32. Oh, yeah, yes, sorry, we do have time, and I forgot, liaison reports are on the agenda.
I had a really great meeting with, which is one of the reasons I was talking about, you know, like, the role of liaison, but I had a great meeting with the Historical Commission, and, you know, it was just, it was informative, kind of like, what are they working on? And then, you know, me, you know, having been on the Historical Commission, I, you know, we just chatted through, like, you know, what is the role of Historical Commission inside the district, outside of the district, and, you know, we just kind of discussed that. And then just making it, you know, really, really clear that, you know, my role as being the liaison isn't to go to every single one of their meetings, but it's to be there for them if they need anything, or if they need input from the Board or anything like that. And it was a, it was a really great discussion.
Good, any other liaison reports people want to offer?
I do think we might want to, at some point in the fairly, I don't think it's urgent right now, because we're going into winter, but just puts, you know, a discussion with the Center Park people on, on the committee, on the.
On our.
The agenda.
To reach out to, you mean?
Yeah, just to have them come up and come in and talk about their plans, because I drove by, and there's been a lot of work there, and it's way outside of the scope of our agreement with them. And so I'd just like to know what the plans are. The current agreement is that to maintain the current beddings. And it's gone just farther beyond that, I'm not saying what they've done is not good, but I think it's, you know.
Because we.
We, you know, we are supposed to be kind of directing that kind of work per our agreement with that organization.
Yeah.
And so just to make sure that we're crossing all the i's, dotting all the t's, and if anybody says what's happened, you know, we can say, well, we voted on it, there was a public meeting for discussion. I think it's important to kind of get in alignment with them, you know, we kind of signed the agreement, like, back when I was on the Board last time, and I'm not sure we've really kind of kept in touch with them.
Gone back and checked in, yeah.
Just want to make sure that, that we're in alignment with them.
And, I mean, knowing well, one of the key players, I'm sure she'd be thrilled to come in and stop with us, as would probably some of the other members.
And just being clear, you know, currently it's maintaining the existing beds, anything else needs to have our approval.
Good idea, and along those lines, for those of you that were on the Board when we authorized the Kindernook camps to use the Conant Land for their programs, which they, you know, periodically come back and asked us to renew our approval, so I think we need to do that. our approval, so I think we need to do that again in January and, uh, again, understand, talk with them about what they're actually doing on the Conant land because, um, I was out there with a neighbor who, who's, uh, nearby and there were some things that they're now doing that I don't think were part of our original, um, conversation with them about.
That's happened in the past and they were incredibly responsive.
No, I know, I was part of that in the past, but I'm just, they're, anyway, it's time for us, I think, to have them come back in as well, um, for a discussion about their program, so we'll put that on.
And, yeah, and that, I think that's a great idea, not, not to beat the dead horse of the, the, the Center Park. It's a super important component of the center of town and we don't have a liaison to that group, and I think we probably should.
Yeah.
I heard of a, I heard of volunteers.
No. I, I.
The absent member.
The outside of territorial boundaries of the US during the.
Yeah. Um, but, but let's, yeah, let's take that up too, you know.
Jen, you had a note to approve minutes of November 23rd, but we don't have them yet.
So, we're, yeah, we're waiting to get the final, um, info on the dog hearing.
Oh, okay.
Get that language.
Suddenly front and center, do you have something you wanted to say?
Hi, Alan.
Hello, Alan.
Did you want to, uh, suddenly you're, we're viewing you, did you want, have something you wanted to say?
I'm just enjoying watching you work.
All right.
He's not the only one on the, you know.
He just shows.
He's suddenly front and center, I thought something happened.
Came up on the screen.
He put his mic on or something.
I got you, okay, well, thank you all that have followed us, have followed along via Zoom. Um, I'd like to take, unless somebody wants to discuss the warrants that I signed. Um, they, they were all pretty straightforward, the town expense one had some, um, had some of the insurance in there, um, health insurance, so, uh, any, if there isn't any other business, uh, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn at 9:38.
There you go. Second.
All those in favor? Aye, okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Very good, all right.
Tim, thank you, and Jen, thank you, and, uh.